This is a special meeting of the Aquifer Protection Agency, and we'll begin with introduction of members and seating of alternates. We'll begin with town staff. Here in the room, we have Dawn.
Dawn Bright, recording secretary.
Dan, Dan Berait, town planner.
And the other town staff, right? Okay. For commission members, we'll begin with introductions here in the room. On my left.
Victoria Chechet.
Bob Ellsworth.
Carolyn Freeman.
Robert Taylor.
And on Zoom, we have Chantel. Okay, you're a little faint, Chantel, if you can make sure you get close. Thank you. So first item of business is new business, and there is none. Under old business, we have, I believe, four certification renewals to be approved tonight. So I believe you have a motion for each one. Is that correct, Dan?
Yeah, that's correct, Bob. We have four motions. We received in all the applications. They all were reviewed by Jacobson, by David Campbell. He had a couple of comments on each one, and I just followed up with the various entities, got them to amend their applications, and they're all set now.
Okay.
So we can start with the first one.
Sure. Would you mind reading the first one, Victoria?
Not at all. August 18, 2022, Aquifer Protection Agency motion to approve registration of application number 03-2022 of the Town of Portland for a regulated use located within the Glastonbury Turnpike Well Field Aquifer Protection Area. The registered use listed in the application is the storage of de-icing chemicals, salt storage facility, fleet, state, or municipal garage at a property known as Assessors Map 68, Lot 36, on Sage Hollow Road, Zone R25. Conditions: This registration will expire on August 18, 2027. A renewal form for new registration must be submitted to the Aquifer Protection Agency prior to this date. Transfer of the registration and/or a permit to change or add a regulated activity at this location will require review and approval of the agency. The agency, by written notice, may require the registrant to supply additional documentation when deemed necessary to protect the well. This information includes submission of a materials management plan and/or storm water management plan.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is approved.
We're assigned twice.
Yep, you have to sign twice since you made the motion.
Chantel, is it okay if I just initial for you on these?
Yeah, yeah. We're going to make the squiggle.
I'll squiggle then. I'll squiggle.
I'll take the second one, Dan.
Okay.
I'll read it. Okay. Motion to approve registration of application 04-2022 and application 06-2022 for Jarvis Airfoil Inc. for a regulated use located within the Glastonbury Turnpike Well Field Aquifer Protection Area. The registered use listed in the application is a production or fabrication of metal products at a property known as 528 Glastonbury Turnpike, Assessors Map 83, Lot 1, and Assessors Map 76, Lot 5, Zone Industrial. Conditions: This registration will expire on August 18, 2027. A renewal form for new registration must be submitted to the Aquifer Protection Agency prior to this date. Transfer of the registration and/or permit to change or add a regulated activity at this location will require review and approval of the agency. The agency, by written notice, may require the registrant to supply additional documentation when deemed necessary to protect the well. This information includes submission of a materials management plan and/or storm water management plan. May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. Let's see, I'll take the third one. Carolyn, could I ask you to read this one, please?
To approve registration of application 1-2022 and application 2-2022 of the Town of Portland for regulated uses located within the Glastonbury Turnpike Well Field Aquifer Protection Area. The registered uses listed in the application are the repair of maintenance of vehicles or internal combustion engines of vehicles and car or truck washing, unsued at a property known as 505 Glastonbury Turnpike, Assessors Map 76, Lots 8 and 9, Zone Industrial. Conditions: This registration will expire on August 18, 2027. A renewal form for new registration must be submitted to the Aquifer Protection Agency prior to this date. Transfer of the registration and/or a permit to change or add a regulated activity at this location will require review and approval of the agency. The agency, by written notice, may require the registrant to supply additional documentation when deemed necessary to protect the well. This information includes submission of a materials management plan and/or storm water management plan.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. And the very last one, we'll send down to Rob to read.
Motion to approve registration of application number 05-2022 for business known as On the Go, owned by Salma Enterprises LLC, for a regulated use located within the Glastonbury Turnpike Well Field Aquifer Protection Area. The registered use listed in the application is for oil or petroleum dispensing for the purpose of retail, wholesale, or fleet use at the property known as 421 Gospel Lane, Assessors Map 68, Lot 4, Zone B-2, General Business. Conditions: This registration will expire on August 18, 2027. A renewal form for new registration must be submitted to the Aquifer Protection Agency prior to this date. Transfer of the registration and/or a permit to change or add a regulated activity at this location will require review and approval of the agency. The agency, by written notice, may require the registrant to supply additional documentation when deemed necessary to protect the well. This information includes submission of materials management plan and/or storm water management plan.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is approved. So that was the four, right, Dan? That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Next item of business then is staff report or other items? Anything for us?
No.
Okay, next item is public comment. Would anybody like to make a comment for the Aquifer Protection Agency? Anything online? Anybody on chat online?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing none, next item is the approval of the minutes. We have a minor revision to the minutes of June 16. I screwed that up. So under item number three, there was a motion Chantel made, seconded by Robert, to approve the minutes for the 619 meeting, and that should be to approve the agenda for the 619 meeting.
Okay, yeah, maybe I got that. Yeah, 616, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
So there are two minor, two minor adjustments. Thank you, Dan. So may I have a motion to approve the revised minutes?
Sure.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Sorry about that.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the minutes from June 16 are approved. Next is motion to adjourn, please. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I can leave.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Okay, I've got seven o'clock. Are we all set for video? Okay, the meeting will now come to order. We'll begin with introduction and member, introduction of members and seating of alternates. We'll begin with town staff. Here in the room, we have Dawn.
Dawn Bright, recording secretary.
And Dan.
Dan Berait, town planner.
Okay. And for commission members, we'll do introductions starting on my left.
Victoria Chechet.
Bob Ellsworth.
Carolyn Freeman.
Robert Taylor.
And on Zoom. Hi, Chantel. Okay, thank you. So first item of business is to accept the agenda. We do have one minor addition. Under item number seven, receive in applications, we'll add one application to receive in. That is application 22-03, which is a subdivision for 55 South Road, but we will get to that. So may I have a motion to accept the revised agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the revised agenda is accepted. Next is our public hearing for application 21-18, proposed amendment to Section 9 of the Town of Portland zoning regulations to add a new Section 9.18 under special regulations for cannabis moratorium. Now, this is a continuation from our previous meeting, and I guess we can start because we had asked at last meeting for a bit of a clarification on the regulations regarding the existing medical cannabis facility that was in operation in town.
Okay, so I emailed Carrie Olson, asked her, you know, whether a medical approval, whether that would need reapproval if it was for recreation, you know, recreational retail sales. She indicated it did not. So that location would not need to come back to the commission as far as zoning is concerned. I still don't know the details regarding what would be required from the state of Connecticut if they would require them to come back. In because of that, I kind of, I guess, have two options. It seemed primarily that it was the retail sales that were potentially a concern, that we'd get a lot of applications in the interim between now and when the regs are revised. So I produced an option where it was simply a moratorium on retail sales. It would not apply to cultivators, really all the other definitions that are there, you know, delivery service, food and beverage manufacturer, you know, things like that, but it would simply be retail stores that would be, it would have a moratorium. Now, we also, I know, talked about, you know, the length of time potentially. Right now, what we have is proposed is six months, so that would be a moratorium to, I believe, May 19. I had the effective date for tomorrow. We could alter the length of the moratorium. So you kind of have a few options in each direction. We can go for the full moratorium. We can go for simply a retail one, and we also can adjust the date and length of the moratorium and shorten it if the commission would like to.
I think that would be March, wouldn't it? March 19, if we went six months?
I might be wrong. Yeah.
If I did my math correctly. I think it's March.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will, I will update that.
February.
February.
So August 19 to February 6.
I don't know what I was thinking, but okay.
And February.
So February 19.
Okay, so that's the clarification we had asked for.
I just have one question about that.
Yep.
There was also a question about just removing the word "medical."
We could also do that, but we don't have to do that because the existing cultivator, it does not matter, at least in the eyes of the town, whether it's being cultivated for medical or recreational or both.
But it might matter to the state.
Potentially. So we could, I guess we could also do an option where it's a full moratorium, but I think part of that is the existing facility that's medical. They would like to do both now.
Right, so you had, I think you had mentioned at the last meeting, just removing the word "medical" so that you're not stipulating that it's just medical, and even though the town doesn't care, the state might take issue with that.
Right, yeah, and I don't know. I know the gentleman who runs that is here. He might be able to better answer that question for you, whether he needs to come back or not. I guess the only reason if we went with just straight retail would be, you know, in case they do need to come back to you to start up, and that's a requirement of the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I will now open it up to public discussion regarding the proposed moratorium. Anybody on the commission would like to speak about it?
I guess I'll start, just because that was the, about COVID last meeting.
Sure.
If we do plan on going with the moratorium, I would like to just limit it to retail establishments. That way, we can make sure that we get those regulations down correctly to meet the needs of COVID Portland and the existing application that we already approved, because the comments we received since then have made good points about business planning, at least for the current business that we did approve, and the impact of, you know, kind of reducing or eliminating any limitations of retail establishments. I don't think that we should put a cap on any other of the license types. I don't see the need for it, but, you know, for retail establishments, I can understand that concern. So if we do decide to go with moratorium instead of trying to just hammer down the regulations, I would rather just limit it to retail only.
And I think that was one of the options.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and I think the intent was, even if the moratorium happened, that we would bring back the regulations, you know, as a, as a agenda item for the meeting for you guys to finish up.
Right.
So that's the, really, the whole intent is just to give you guys time before applications come in to make that decision.
Is this the public, can you public speak right now?
Yes.
Like, Dan, how do you feel about that?
Oh, about the retail?
About the moratorium being just on retail, since you could...
Yeah, if you want to speak, come up. If you would approach the podium.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Hello, Andrew Semino, Six West Ave, LLC, 78 Marlborough Street. Yeah, I appreciate that and agree. From a retail perspective, you know, I think it's right to get it, you know, correct. And I think Reno should probably speak on from the cultivation perspective.
Good evening. Reno Fair East, 47 Main Street. I'm sorry, I walked in like a minute late. So we're saying that this would just apply to all new retail businesses. It would be, it would not apply to cultivators.
Correct.
And production facilities.
Correct.
I think that would be reasonable.
That is one of the options that's being proposed, yes.
Okay. And so, and then, again, 47 Main would be excluded from requiring to get further zoning approval, correct?
Yeah, and just to clarify for you, I had spoken with the town attorney, Carrie Olson, and, you know, I don't know what the state's going to require you, but as of right now, you wouldn't need to come back regardless of the moratorium, whether you're growing for medical or recreational. You know, which thing you cultivate for doesn't change how you're operating the business or the approval and the stipulations in that approval. So from the town's perspective, it doesn't matter whether you're growing for medical or recreational at this time. So you would, you would have been exempt even if we passed the other moratorium, but I don't know whether you needed to come back based on your state licensing.
They would, they would require evidence of sites of local support.
Okay, yeah, okay. So either way, I can sign off on your facility.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I just...
So I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
If we, if we approve the moratorium for, with, just for retail and start working on the regulations, and if we get the regulations completed prior to the moratorium, and we end the moratorium early?
I have the exact same question, so.
Okay, so, so I believe so. I've never seen that done. You know, my recommendation would maybe shorten it to four months or three months, something like that, if you think you can put to, you want to put together the regulations quickly, because I guess the only, I mean, it's only six months, so we would work on the regs. It would have to go to a public hearing. It would have to then pass, get through the appeal period, and then we would have to then set another public hearing to potentially, you know, change the regs again, so it might, you know, you're going to look at another month or two anyways on the clock, you know, even if we get to get it together pretty quickly.
Okay. Dan, from what I understand, the moratorium is going to be part of the, a new regulation anyways, so when we, when we modify the...
Yeah, I guess that's possible.
...the deletion of the moratorium.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yep, we could, we could possibly do that. Yep, as long as we, we notice it in that manner. So, but it's...
Thank you.
Excellent question. Other comments regarding our moratorium? Members of the public, if anyone would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom would like to make any comment regarding this application? Okay. Hearing none and seeing none.
Please use your microphones, Chantel. Speak into the microphone.
Sorry. Okay, hearing and seeing none, then. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on application 21-18? on application 21-18?
So.
That was Carolyn. And a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Say no. Okay, the public hearing for application 21-18 is now closed. Any further discussion amongst commission members? Sounds like we want to go ahead with the motion, then, Dan, for the moratorium applying to retail establishments only. All right, who feels ambitious? Victoria?
Yeah, no, I don't, so I don't, just read the top part. You don't have to get into the body.
What's, what's the top?
I would say the underlying part.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not too bad.
Okay, August 18, 2022, Planning and Zoning Commission motion to approve application 21-18. Request for text amendment to zoning regulation section 9.18, temporary cannabis retail moratorium. Effective date, this zoning regulation text amendment change will go into effect on August 19th, 2022, with changes and/or clarifications to the proposed text amendment as follows.
Maybe just read three, the applicability and the effective date term, just those, those two?
Applicability. During this temporary and limited term moratorium, new cannabis retail establishments shall be prohibited in the town of Portland. And any and all applications submitted for the approval of any cannabis retail establishment shall be denied by the commission or zoning enforcement officer as be appropriate. Effective date term, this temporary and limited moratorium shall become effective on August 19th, 2022, and shall remain in effect until February 19th, 2023.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, this is Bob. I vote aye. Victoria?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Chantel?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed or would be none, so the application is approved.
Who seconded that again? I'm sorry. Carolyn?
Okay. We will now move on to the public hearing for application 22-01, Main Street, Marble Street, and West Side of Perry Avenue. Request for special permit modification, application of BRT DeMarco PTP LLC. Again, this public hearing is continued from our last meeting. And at the time, we were asked for, to extend this for, to be able to wrap up some plans and some documentation. So I know we have received a letter, and we've received another set of plans. Now, are these, can someone answer if these plans are different from the ones that we reviewed last meeting?
Good evening, Dan Perdini. The updates are the incorporating the suggestions made by Alan in the last meeting revolving around the Hart Jarvis House. And what we thought we would do today is just show what was changed as part of a quick presentation. But other than that, we don't have a lot to present.
I think that would be a great idea. Yep.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Nick Houschek. I'm a registered landscape architect with CCA Engineering in Brookfield, Connecticut. Basically, since we last met, there has been a change to the Hart Jarvis building. In particular, to the front of the building at the top of your screen, there has been a change of the site plan which reflects Alain McInerich's changes to the architecture, particularly the elevator tower, the terrace at the back. As a result of that, we are able to eliminate extra ramps up to the building on either side. So now we have handicapped access at the rear of the building. So it's a much cleaner solution. I bring your attention to the letter that has the waiver request. And the only change to that letter, and we submitted that, our zoning regulation table 8.2.2, off-street parking for residential and commercial uses. Instead of proposing a 25.9% reduction in required parking, we are proposing a 22.9. And this is, originally, it was 100, 1,030 spaces, and now we're presenting 990 spaces. So in particular, the area we're talking about is the Hart Jarvis building. So the first floor of the Hart Jarvis building was originally proposed as restaurant, and now it's going to be office. So both the first and the second floor will be office. With the elevator access at the rear of the building. And once again, the required parking is changing from 968 to 990 versus 1,030. Basically, that's it. It's very simple since last time. The main change of the site plan is the Hart Jarvis building as it's presented.
I just had, I just had a question on the drawing up there. Are you saying the terrace and the elevator shaft have been eliminated?
No, this is the old presentation. If, if you could put on the screen, drawing C2 in the submission set. The elevator and the terrace have been added.
Can you? Because that's what my drawer looks.
A couple more, please.
It's the sixth page. C2, I got it right here.
So this is our layout plan, the Hart Jarvis building. And previous, we, you know, no elevator or everything back. We had a system of ramps coming up to the front of the building, and they were very lengthy in order to accomplish that. So with this new thing, we're providing an elevator tower at the rear. There's stairs down to the parking lot, and sidewalk running around the corner of the building, and steps going up to the front. We had a wonderful porch in the front.
And I can't, I can't read the fine print on the Hart Jarvis. But as I understand it, it will all be office space?
It will all be office space. I just want to point out that on this site plan, there's a leftover, where we indicate that was a restaurant.
Okay.
That is not correct anymore. It's all office.
It's probably not in your, you're a landscape architect?
Yeah, landscape architect.
So you wouldn't have the, the building elevations?
No.
Okay. See those anywhere?
Is it possible to zoom in?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
Right there.
Yeah, sorry. So all of these site changes to the site plan reflect what Mr. McInerich presented two weeks ago. And we're just following through and changing the site plan to reflect those changes.
So you're the landscape-
The landscape architect.
Right. So what type of, I know it showed, I'm not on the landscape page, but I know it showed some shrubbery of some type along Perry Avenue. And I know there's a concern about, for those residents, there's a concern about people parking on Perry and going through. I'm wondering what that-
Yes, I remember the question from two weeks ago, and that is heavily planted. If anybody went out of their way to go through those shrubs as they reach maturity, they would have a very difficult time. It's, it would be next to impossible to do that. It wouldn't be worth their while. They're a combination of evergreens and deciduous that get rather large when they grow and they knit together. It's just not going to happen.
Is there, is there a plan anywhere for, for what is being planted along Perry Avenue? You mentioned evergreens and deciduous trees, but is there-
Well, that's part of the original presentation. That was part of the approved site plan. That has not changed.
There was a, I'm sorry, last time.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I just wanted to see if they did anything additional.
Yes, if you go to drawing C5, that would bring up the landscape, please. But we're mainly here to discuss the revision since our last meeting, which would have been a modification to the Hart Jarvis footprint. And some adjustment to the parking count. It's really all that's new tonight? Down, please. The other way down, C5? Little bit more. Perfect.
Do you want him to zoom in on that Perry outside, or no?
I'm not sure anything has changed.
No, I was just wondering if, because there were, there were a couple of comments about that, and there were concerns, I didn't know if you took that into consideration. I didn't see that you did anywhere in the material that we were provided.
Right.
But I didn't know if maybe you took that into consideration.
I did, I did listen to the question. I can assure you that that area has been fully landscaped. It's been packed. And when we spot plants, we, we deal with mature spread. So they're spaced in order to accommodate that. So everything will knit together to one solid bed. Anything closer, they would, they would crowd each other and die.
Any additional questions regarding changes since our last meeting?
One question. It might be me misunderstanding this, but the change you made with the Jarvis House, with the elevator, is there still, like, ramp access at all? Or is it just the elevator is the only way for handicap access to get in and out of the building?
It's, it's, it's in lieu of, yeah. So it's just that, but it was in large part, reframe and present the building kind of in its original form, while still, of course, providing access. And there are ramps up and down the sides now. So like, in terms of visualizing the improvement of just being able to move it and get back to the original structure, I think it's, I think it's sensitively providing access.
So I guess the reason why I'm asking is, is that, has that been cleared with the fire marshal for, like, necessary means of egress?
I think what I could do is, let Alan weigh in on that. There's a licensed architect. And we do also have connections via Zoom, the other architect for other buildings on the site, just in case we need to have their expertise.
I'm Alan Monkitrick with Monkitrick Associates. We're architects here in Portland. So the, as long as we have a exterior access to a refuge for anybody who might be within the building if there was an emergency, they need to be, be able to exit the building and get to a, a area of refuge. Luckily, we have three porches, and we have two exterior doors onto the, onto two of those three door porches, which are, we are assuming that the fire marshal and the building official will agree with us, with our interpretation, that that will, will serve as a, as a area of refuge for any, anybody handicapped who would, in a case of an emergency, would need to get out of the building to be rescued.
Do you, I have another question for you while you're there. Do you have renderings or elevations of the, the changes to the building?
We have not developed that yet. We, the, the presentation that we made at the last meeting were our schematic preliminaries.
Right.
So, no. We, we've started to develop them within the office, and, and, you know, we can submit them at a certain point. But we're, we're confident that the solution is going to have the, the least impact on the, on the historic elevations of the, of the building.
I think it's, I think it's, personally, I'm excited that you don't have to move the building and that, you know, that you're, you're able to use it a different way. But you are, you are required by the, by the agreement, the special permit agreement, the general conditions, A12, to supply elevations with any changes that you make to the historic buildings. So it's, it's-
We, we haven't submitted any elevations so far. We've done, we have renderings that we presented at one of the earliest presentations to this board. But if you can draw, if you can draw my attention to the specific reference, I'd be happy to address it.
Yeah, it's just the original application, 1706, from February 7th, 2018. And it's under general conditions. It's number 12.
Okay.
And so I'm just kind of interested in seeing some of those elevations, because for me, the visual is very important. And since it's required, I thought maybe I would ask if you had-
No, it's a, it's a great question. And we'll be entering that phase next. I can tell you this, that I'm quite heartened to tell you that the three buildings will have absolutely minimal exterior alterations to the historic fabric. I mean, you know, we'll be replacing windows in certain of the buildings that need to be. The later additions to these, the nonhistoric additions to the Sage House, for example, have been removed. They don't relate to the period of significance for the, for that building. And with, similarly with Hart Jarvis, with the, with the, that rear L, we feel, feel that that's, that's expendable. In terms of the materials, our goal is to comply with the Secretary of the Interior's Guidelines for Rehabilitations wherever we can that's feasible. And that's our intent and our goal.
Okay. It's also a requirement.
It's a requirement, right.
So it has to be more than an intent and a goal. And, and the, or, there's also in this original document from February 17, 2018, a reference to the original buildings. And I can just point out to, under buildings, C1 and C3, if you could just, just take a look at those and, and there's- And there's some reference to the original preservation and reuse. I don't want to take the time to read them all, but those two, C1 and C3 are important under Buildings.
Victoria, so some of those conditions, so those were conditions of the original approval. So you're looking at the modifications that they're talking about. Those conditions still remain?
Yeah.
So those will all be looked at on the administrative side when they apply for administrative permits for each one of these buildings, and then they go for their individual COs. So those are things that we will do administratively most likely as staff as the project moves along.
So do we have a clerk of the works or something that the town has...
What do you mean a clerk of the works?
A clerk of the works, someone that's employed by the town to oversee the project?
Yeah, so we will most likely get some outside support. But, you know, we have our current town staff that will be doing some of this as well.
Okay.
But I'm sure certainly on the meeting the Secretary of State's standards, that's something we'll probably... Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's something we'll probably get outside support on. As I'm not qualified on that, but a lot of these other things will be handled by myself, the building official, the fire marshals. Certainly like if the elevator is handicap accessible, if that is suitable, you know, that's going to be vetted when those plans are submitted again to the fire marshal and the building official. And if there's any issues with those, you know, they'll have to be rectified before we can move forward.
All right, and it's like the kind of materials you use to replace the windows and things like that.
Oh, yeah. All of that will be submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Chantel.
I'm good. Can I just talk or do I need to chat? What do I need to do?
We can hear you. We're here in the room.
Okay. Okay. I just, I wanted to make some comments about the request for the special modification. Is it okay if I do that now? Just going to bring some things that I put together. Really just because we have a lot of commission members and some of the... Is it okay, Bob?
Yes, certainly.
And because some of our newer members haven't been around for integrations project, I wanted to share some framework for what the original intent for this development was and also provide a brief review of where we were and how we got here. And I talked about this a little bit in the last meeting. But the original plan for the application we're discussing tonight was approved on February 2018. And the discussions leading us back through that approval started actually in March of 2016, text amendments that were later granted to allow for increased housing density over four times what was allowed in our regulations in this mixed-use development. Developer made the case for increased housing densities, maybe it was necessary for various reasons. And at the time, there was concern expressed about the proposed number of apartments, 240, a lot of apartments. The commission considered many factors and ultimately decided that commercial development and place making that would be achieved by this mixed-use development, as it was in 2018, was to keep our plan of conservation and development. And in fact, these things were mentioned in our PRCD under a vision before, right at the beginning of the document. Amid the decision hinge back in 2018, it had pinned on having a former home first property built in where they make it a desirable place to live by offering various retail establishments to residents of the 240 of those apartments and by creating a new town center, which included the preservation of historic buildings. The next iteration of the plan approved in September 2020 involved shifting approximately 7% of the retail development to the second phase, but still keeping the construction of the commercial retail and residential component largely concurrent, which is what the mixed-use development strategy is all about. The latest request is to substantially change, and I realize we're spending time here talking about the actual plan, we're looking at the plan, but I'm talking about the overall construction process. The latest request is to substantially change the construction timing of the commercial retail aspect of the development so that over 60% of that would be started after almost all of the 240 apartments are completed. My recollection of the timeframe of Phase 1 is somehow it would take 18 months to complete the first apartment building. And Phase 2 would likely be similar. So maybe between three and four years from now, the balance of the overall commercial building would start to be built. We've been given an explanation by the developer as to why this request is being made, but I'm not confident that delaying the commercial aspect will get us who we want to be. What I said at the last meeting is the chicken and the egg, and I just don't know if any guys would want to be. What happens if in an environment, if in a few years after the apartments are built, the economic environment is such that doing the retail development is not possible? By allowing the proposed delay of the retail piece, we are taking a chance that it won't get built that long. And I understand the desire of the developer to focus on building the residential components of this development, but I question the need to do it in this fashion.
Thank you. Would someone like to address some of the questions?
So I agree with the history of the approvals, and certainly it has evolved. The proposal that we're making here now is to try to do more now, not to change the plan. So it has to do with the timing of Building F. And we had read a letter from our third actual broker. Alan talked about getting new brokers. We had one, Atlantic Realty, then we had Sullivan Hayes, now we have CBRE. We're not coming here from an uninformed position about what response we've had for commercial leasing. We're trying to deal with the realities of the existing situation. The proposal, as it relates to Hart Jarvis in the existing approval, we have an obligation to allow it to be moved by others to another part of the site, the southwest corner. The others that have been so designated have not been successful in raising funds to make that move. So we are starting Phase 1. That is obvious in front of all. We drive by the site, take down trees, we're doing stuff. The hope is to do as much as possible. So our argument is to provide consideration for the flexibility that the regulations allow in terms of the timing of the buildout of the project. The master plan is not materially different. We're saying we will take on an obligation that we don't currently have in the context of fixing up the Hart Jarvis building in the way proposed. We can't necessarily do that. We would probably go back to trying to figure out how to move it to the southwest corner of the site if we can't begin Building F at this stage in the game. So I think that that's the challenge. The CBRE letter was a little long. I apologize for subjecting everybody to that, but I thought it did capture their request to have more commercial space deliverable in a noble timeline. And so that 10,000 square feet adds to the Phase 1 offerings nicely. We also feel that the Hart Jarvis House as office is tolerable. It'll never pay for itself. It's an investment that's one-way money. Fixing up these three historic buildings from Rayner to Sage to Hart Jarvis is a challenging exercise. So we think we have a way forward that will be impactful. And I think that the broader comment I would make in general is that we have a 15-acre site here, and we have a mixed-use regulation that calls for it being balanced. We have no right to do more apartments. If we can't get the commercial demand to build A, A will never get built. We're saying, as a development team that's done billions of dollars of development, that these are things that we can do to take away some risk by building more sooner in the life cycle of the project. You have no obligation to allow us to do that. And I think that that's, I think as plainly as I can say that, as it relates to the stimulative effect, and what we believe is, I think, a contribution to the town of Portland, is that this project is more than the 15 acres. So the more we can invest sooner, the more we catalyze for surrounding properties. And I think that that is stimulative. I hate to not do things we can figure out how to do because there's so many things in a cyclical business where circumstances change and we're all taking another five-year break. We don't know what the next pandemic is. We don't know what the next interest rate hike is that makes these jobs not pencil out. Folks were questioning the residential rents. So there are a number of things that go into a decision to make a proposal. We're certainly not looking to waste anyone's time. We think that this is something that works. We cannot, though, say that without starting Building F, that we could commit to keeping Hart Jarvis where it is. We would be going back, looking at the plan as it's approved. We could withdraw this application and leave the existing entitlement in place, and you will see a project get built in its Phase 1 capacity, and we'll figure out something to do with Hart Jarvis, right? But we think this is a balanced approach to additional historic preservation. And we think it's feasible. We're willing to try. We're just looking for permission. If there's anything specific that I missed, please.
I hear you saying that, I hear you kind of confirming Chantel's concern. And that concern is that, you know, you might get the residential built and then not get the commercial done. Because you said if you can't get the commercial demand, they won't get built.
It's at the very root of our proposal. It's true.
So that, I think, goes right to the concern that has been on everyone's mind from the very beginning. And I wasn't present, but I have gone back and read and tried to educate myself as much as possible on the history of this. And, you know, one of the things in our articles and our regulations, there's, and I'm pointing these out, but 9.17.5M2 specifically says, and I don't know that you can, that we can even honor this request with this regulation worded the way that it is without going against our own regulations, says, if you were to read, you could read the whole thing, but the gist of it is that you have to... I'm going to read it because it'll make it easier, and then you can respond. "The phasing plan of development shall identify the schedule of development of the commercial/retail elements and the residential elements of the plan. The approved plan shall contain a schedule that provides development of both commercial, retail, and residential elements concurrently, with neither eligible to receive a certificate of occupancy while the other element is less than 50% completed. This ratio shall be measured by the percent of residential units in proportion to the percent of square footage of buildings to be utilized for commercial retail. For good cause shown and following a public hearing, the developer may secure relief from this requirement," which is what you're trying to do, "as a modification to the approved plan, provided that the commission is satisfied that conditions beyond the control of the developer will prevent the execution of the schedule of development as scheduled." And I understand your plight and your argument and the things that you've talked about and the challenges of finding tenants. But I don't see that you've satisfied conditions beyond your control. And I feel, I think that the threat of not doing anything with the Hart Jarvis House or that being like the trade-off for you...
It's a proposal.
Making the mixed-use development idea of this going forward work kind of doesn't really...
We have regulations that were written many years ago.
Well, we would have to do a text amendment if we were to go against these regulations.
What was done years ago, in my view, and please, I don't want to start before you're finished.
No, go ahead.
I believe there was foresight in the regulations in the last two sentences there, where there was allowance for the exercise of discretion. We can make the argument that there are circumstances beyond our control. Certainly, what has happened in commercial real estate since these regulations were drafted, I personally feel no responsibility for, yet I believe it to be real. And having changed the demand for commercial real estate throughout the country, we have had, like I said, commercial brokers advocate for us. And Atlantic Realty was the first out of Boston. Sullivan Hayes was more local, but I will say that I didn't read a letter from them, but it was scathing in terms of their feeling of the potential for Portland's commercial development. So we picked Alan's advice from last time. We fired him and we moved on to someone else. We are trying to enable that someone else. I don't like to talk down my own project. The headwinds are significant. We will do what we've started doing. We're just asking to do more, and we think we're all in it together, frankly. We made decisions to start this project because we're in a town where we can actually have a discussion. And I think that is not out there everywhere, not municipalities, and something that we view as a strength for the Portlanders. So I would put to you a question, which is, what risk is the commission taking when they hold the keys to Building A in the future? There's no one who can come in and propose something else for Building A that you can't say yes or no to. So if we're saying that by building more, getting more excitement, getting more deliverables, right, that we can actually say to someone, you know, we'll have even more, another 10,000 square feet more of commercial utilization in Building F. If we don't think that's helpful to add to what we're already doing in Phase 1 to the leasing process for Building A, I don't know how it's not helpful. I don't know what risk the town is... I don't know what risk the town is taking by allowing this to go on, but I make my case and I live with the results. I think if I felt that the commission was going to just turn this down, I would just withdraw and not put everyone through the exercise. There's no reason to do that because frankly, we're here building in the town of Portland and trying to make a successful job and we're trying to listen to our partners. And CBA has given us some very clear input, we agree with it. My partners, I have a, the core of my strength is in residential housing. Our partners have significant, you know, over a million square feet of commercial. They know that business as well and this is with their full endorsement to get as much going as possible to stimulate demand.
So, when you say to get as much going as possible to stimulate the goal.
Yeah.
You're talking about the residential?
No, we're talking purely in the context of commercial leasing. So, in, if we could put up the site plan.
Because I know you're doing some commercial.
Absolutely. Right, well, let me, let me describe to you. If you are a business that may want to come into Portland, what you can sign up for now in Phase One? If I can show that site plan, no, no rush. This is the first thing that Nick had up in his presentation. The very first one is the easiest one to work off of, just to kind of walk through the Phase One. Yeah, here we go. So, Phase One, as envisioned here, is building E at this corner out of Perry. The Brainerd House, thus far, no commercial. With the exception of the amenity support that the Brainerd House provides and the leasing Hart Jarvis here. Hart Jarvis being 2,000, 3,000 square feet of office in an historic building. That is a, a local lawyer, a dentist. It's, it's, it's not a branded retailer who would come into that. Here, we have in 2,400 square feet Starbucks slated to go and they're happy to be able to, you know, join the town. The remainder of that building is roughly 1,400 square feet, but that's a very small user. Chipotle or Jersey Mike's or something, right? But it's not a large user. The Sage House is a very, very, very challenging building, right? It has a wing that we took off, but the, the back of that house is my test when I go into structures and I raise my hand, if my finger hits the ceiling, right, the ceiling's too low, right, because that's about eight feet, eight-one. So, this back section of Hart Jarvis is not, excuse me.
Of Sage.
Sage is not going to attract a commercial tenant. This out here is about 13,000 square feet of a pad site, right, for, it was designed for a CBS because they were very interested in the site at the time. When we're talking, that this was originally conceptualized, their design engineers gave us all of their specifications when we were coming through and the latest relevant news I've read about CBS is closing 300 stores, right? So, things do change. And they were always viewed as kind of a marquee user and there was all kinds of speculation about how their business models differentiated from Walgreens and that's why they can duke it out next door to each other and all that. But, nothing that active there. So, this is a pad site out there with, at this corner. You don't have any existing commercial space of any import that someone could move in with their 5,000 square feet use, right? This entire section of F is that. And so, it can be in a portion of the site where you come in and you have this as a starting point for a marquee client. We obviously have that, but in a smaller scale here on the Starbucks building. But these historic restorations are very tough, right, in terms of actually getting somebody to come. And we have a, conversely, the opposite problem here, which is 38,000 square foot footprint, I believe. And so, it's a lot of space and you have to, to make the economics work, pre-lease it to a certain level. So, what the commercial tenant, as commercial brokers are asking for is, please tell me when are you going to start the job? For a long time, we've been telling that. When will what be built? We've given them that for Phase One. And now they're saying, what else you got? And we're saying, well, we can get you another 10,000 square feet here so we get a medium-sized user into the mix and hopefully that's another talking point for taking on the big hill, right, which is building A. So, from my perspective, getting more built, I will say this from a point of view of Perry Avenue, people live along Perry Avenue, I said it to one of the folks who spoke at the last meeting. I said, well, the sooner we build these buildings, then the sooner Perry Avenue will be, it's quite a destination of before. And, and again, and this, by the way, I don't want to jump around too much, but this is a, an emergency access only.
Okay, good.
Here and here. So, there is not traffic flowing from this property through Perry, okay? Just an emergency thing. This is our, this is our main access, okay? So, there was sensitivity brought to the design of that, the more we can put up and make complete. And from this location right here, front, what can be built? Yeah. We look at this as a strong talking point with the deliverable here, we'll be flexible and come in. There's no question that this pad site right here will get modified before it is built. We'll come in with another site plan modification because we got one on the hook, right? We got somebody we're trying to make a deal with and they just want to make sure they can get a couple of different things. This has some additional design consideration because of those history, right, that deeper parts, you know, deeper end of the site, doesn't have that same level of regulation. But, it's all tolerable stuff, we kind of take it for granted. But this 10,000 square feet adds to the arsenal of what can be offered, it creates more conversation, gives us a better shot. And, for anyone coming into these spaces, the more people who can just walk over, right, those are customers as well.
So, no, no interest in, in what building is that on the, no?
A.
A?
Yeah. The interest in A, the top of A has 11 apartments in it. And a little bit, that's a function of the mixed-use building itself, has to have a certain amount of ground level, or it's, it has to be mixed-use, so it has to have residential and a commercial component. And then it has to have a certain amount of commercial on the main level to have a certain height, okay? Site drops first 10 feet and then another 10 feet. And so, we built these buildings, or designed these buildings, I should say, to accommodate the contours and to get the maximum effect that we think we can create, you know, with the, so lucky it's to build, build it out. So, here we have, I think, let me tell you, let me tell you a couple of stories about the commercial leasing because I think we have to flesh out the fact that there've been a lot of conversations with a lot of people on the commercial leasing side. I think in 2015, I first came into the picture on this job, CBS was a lock, right? They wanted this site and they just wanted a couple of other things to happen around it. Try to testify to this, right? So, okay, that's a building block for the site. And it just became less and less and less of a building block and they just kept moving the goalposts around. At one point, they said, it will only come in here if we have a grocery anchor in A for them to step off and do this. And now maybe their world was changing and they were, you know, they go to their quarterly meetings and they're supposed to hit new sites. But, it just got more and more and more impossible to do a deal with CBS and it is that we couldn't control. Building A, if you could get a large user, right, we explored every grocer that you could imagine for this site and we would love to do one, right, if we could, if we could get it. But, haven't been successful so far and I would say that lack of success was the reason that we couldn't keep CBS when I think they might have made a commitment back then when they first started moving the goalposts, but they seemed to say, if you get that, we'll move. It didn't happen. So, you have this shift going on, we're trying to adjust to it, we're trying to figure out how to keep things moving forward, but that whole commercial sector's services, right? It's, it's a different thing from the, these destination shopping centers, malls being reworked and fundamental is, I don't know what it's going to be at the end of the day. I just know that we're not going to have a right to do anything but what we've laid out. And, and I know we're going to get earlier discovery on what the market will allow by doing more for it and getting more feedback. Having somebody come in here and be successful in their business is very helpful to hear. And there's not a like customer that we can see getting out of Phase One.
What, what is the percentage breakdown in Phase One that you're proposing between commercial and residential?
There are tables on that that CCA has together, but I don't know if we can.
This is in Jeffrey's email from, oh.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I agree that it is well called out in this, in the review.
If you look at C12 on the lower left-hand side, there's also, breaks down exactly what buildings are in what phase and what square footage is.
I'm just wondering about the percentages.
Yeah, the percentages are there too. Page C12.
Do you have a magnifying glass too?
It's in the letter as well, if Tom wants it.
I was joking about.
Oh, sorry.
37.
So, but I found in Phase One residential for 2022, current proposal 41.25 and commercial
Yes, I'm sure that's, I mean, that, that sounds correct.
And then, yeah, the most notable change is the addition of a new Phase Three and shifting most of the Phase Two commercial development into Phase Three. Because originally, it was two phases and it started at 63% commercial in 2018, then it went to 70% commercial in 2020. And then in this Phase Three, it's, the Phase Two will be 8.8%, 88% commercial. And then, like 60%, as Chantel mentioned, 60% of the commercial would be Phase Three, which is building, is that A?
Yeah, A, yes it is, yeah. And I will say, let me set it back from the past. The only thing I ever know at the beginning of a large job that's got multiple phases, the only thing I know that's not going to get built is the approved plan. Because, for a time, there are modifications that have to be made based on circumstances outside our control. That doesn't mean that there's anything bad going on, it's just the reality of it. Now, from the standpoint of what flexibility the commission's comfortable with, that's your decision. I'm trying to color the situation as best I can, to paint a picture of our experience where we have 40 years tried to get commercial. And at this point, the only argument that, that people can say is, well, maybe there'll be more demand when you build it, right? And so, I'm asking to be able to build it because it is a completely different situation to have someone walk through 10,000 square foot shell of an existing structure that you could justify building even without a tenant. That's going to lease. It's going to lease much more easily than a piece of paper with a box on it, right? That we're trying to say how great it'll be no matter what elevations, renderings and all the other things you do to try to make it polite. So, from our perspective, yeah, I'm just trying to build something.
Further questions, comments, commission members or anyone in the public?
Just while he's coming up, there was a, a comment that Dave got about clarification of Hart Jarvis and just the clarification is, it would be first and second floor office use, the first floor would not be restaurant, it would be office.
Is Pete Wilson building official? Okay, but the plans that were received added as restaurant, as new shoes, restaurant and office, so.
Yeah, they, Pete, they, they, the new submittal that, that we got in is what switched that.
What did that mean?
That came in, came in this week or last week.
I think he just, he just made a comment that there, it does say restaurant on here and he said that.
Yeah, that, yeah, and they indicated that was a mistake, but they had corrected that for Phase One, to put building H in Phase One, that was one of the corrections. But that was the thrust of the presentation, last meeting, that Hart Jarvis would be office on both floors.
And so, in the, in the context of what was going on behind the scenes there, we were trying to modify the site plan to accommodate keeping Hart Jarvis. And civil engineers had one set of assumptions and had the restaurant use sent out to the traffic engineer who reviewed it for impact and they had made their submission. At the same time, I asked for, we'll call it an expert consult, for Alan Niedman, who has spoken about the highest and best uses for Hart Jarvis. And in our field visit that was going on at the same time, he identified things that I thought were real enhancements. And the lack of realism for a restaurant for that building was pointed out and then the beautification of its exterior by removing all the ramps, right? Because back in the 1800s, that wasn't on the original plan, yet we're still accommodating in F access. So, he'd come up with some great ideas that I basically, don't usually do this, but we came in saying, this team put together this, Alan came up with these ideas and we're going to modify and do it within a handful of days, we did, resubmitted, but it's true that the pound engineer was reviewing, reviewing something else and that was why.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mike Nadolski, I live on Blackberry Ridge Road. For those of you who don't know me, I'm also the Chair of Portland's Economic Development Commission. So, like all of you, we've been following this project quite closely. Tonight, though, I'm going to offer my opinions and offer my support. Tonight, though, I'm gonna offer my opinions and offer my support, my strong support for this application, for a number of reasons. First, you know, reading the commercial broker's letter and following the logic behind it, it seems imminently reasonable and logical to me that the reason for the request is completely sound. The ability to build, to move fast, build more, and the pull that'll create for future commercial tenants makes a whole lot of sense. It just makes sense. We also have to acknowledge, and I think Dan pointed this out, is the world's changed. We're in a post-COVID, probably recessionary, certainly risk-oriented environment right now. And in that environment, for economic development, it requires flexibility. And I think if we're not willing to take this flexibility, we're risking undue delay. But more importantly, we're risking losing the benefits that this development can bring to the overall town. And that brings me to my second point. I know we talked about, a little bit about the plan of conservation and development. Priority A of that plan of development is to strengthen the town center, strengthen the town center in its critical mass, critical mass to create activity and vitality. This development does that, it supports that. It brings a new customer base to the town center. And that new customer base supports the existing restaurants and businesses today, many of them who are, who could use additional support and customers, that's quite clear in this environment. I think, I would say more important, but equally important, is the ability to foster redevelopment in the town center, something that is, I would say, critically important. I mean, think about this. All of us came into this building today, the building to the left, the building to the right, they're both vacant. The building across the street, more vacant storefronts. We're never gonna get vitality, we're never gonna get that development for the town center as long as those conditions exist. So we need to think big picture. We need critical mass. We need to have a catalyst that allows more people to live, to walk, to shop, to eat down in the village district. Good news is, we have that catalyst. It's right here in front of us and we ought to support it. We ought to support it because it goes to the fundamental goals, one of the fundamental goals of the Plan of Conservation and Development, which is to support economic development and prosperity for the town and the people who live here. That's what this does. One final point, there's been a lot of talk about the Hart Jarvis building. I think it's wonderful what you guys are doing. I've seen that building, it is a disaster, moving it was, I, not an engineer, but it seemed like a real high-risk proposition for, I'm not sure what game. To be able to take that building and to turn that into Class A real estate is just wonderful. It's wonderful for a number of reasons. One, I think it really adds the unique character, right? The unique character that'll separate this development from other modern developments. It is a unique touch to the town and we ought to try to get that done. I think it's gonna look, I think it's gonna look wonderful. I think also pulling that up and including it with the changes to the Starbucks building is actually gonna be an accelerant to allow us to accelerate and increase the pull, to create pull, to get additional commercial tenants in the fall, in the following sections. So, you know, Dan, I don't know whose idea it was, he gave props to somebody else, but I think it's well done, it's a good addition. And we ought to make sure that we support that. So let me just close and say that, from my perspective, and I'm speaking again from my opinion, but with a lens of economic development for the town, this project should, I think, should be supported. It should move forward, we should move forward with it. The request in today's environment, it seems imminently reasonable, but more importantly, more importantly, the positive impact that this development can have in the town center, as you walk out and look at the lack of development, the lack of critical mass, which we all say, as you've all agreed, is the, you know, priority A of strengthening the town center, this helps us get there, this helps us achieve this goal, this is why we should support it. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is Alvin Gahan, may I have the floor, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna be with you again. I just begin by... So, cussing to the Randus Office and the other members of the town's official establishment that, whatever provisions be made for the use of planning and zoning commission needs with the public in mind. I understand that resuming this being has not always been clear as to whether or not it was available or not. And I know from experience of being in the room with you there, it is a maddening experience with the sound conditions that are seemingly unsolvable. So I just wanna make that point. I hope in the future that the town will pay attention to what I think is the most important body of our local government, which is planning and zoning commission, that we ought to have the very best conditions possible for the public to enjoy their leisure. So, I'll put that to the front side. One other point, I don't know, I got on a little bit late tonight. If you have not approved the minutes of the previous hearing, I would ask you to have those minutes reviewed. I have provided all of the other minutes of testimony, none of it appeared in the fifty minutes of the last hearing. I'll just bring your attention to that. Now, finally, to all that has heard and seen. First, I'm so very proud of each and every member of the planning and zoning commission. I know all of you, I'm very proud of all of you, you're ideal citizens, undertaking responsibilities. Thank you. You've just heard from the present Chairman of the Economic Development Commission. I appreciated him in that call. And so I'll speak from the same podium, with a little more perspective, I think, in terms of timeframe. I'm going to disagree with each one of his points. Let's begin with the importance of the town center and how the town's conservation involvement fits into that picture vis a vis the ongoing development of the, I guess, called the El Crest Campus, fourteen ninety-eighters. Let's suppose that the plan of the El Crest Campus head has closed. And the two buildings are erected and they are fully tentative, that very competitive market base, which has always been, what has been important, clearly gained something in the fifteen hundred dollars range. And you're one of those persons living there and after a hard day of work, you come home to apartment and your apartment, and you realize that you're out of milk. There's no place to get milk unless you get back in your own company and drive home off the property to find a new school or a convenience store. Because as road safety analysis has demonstrated of the processes of the apartment transportation, it's virtually impossible for pedestrians across Main Street and all of those street competing stations. And so, you'd have two very fine apartment buildings without any amenities necessary to maintain a physical quality of life. Unless, of course, you just decided, "I'll skip by and I'll just go over to the middle town and have a meal in the city restaurants." And there goes the commerce of Main Street in Portland. It might go over the bridge to the middle town. What I'm arguing for here, and it's been so beautifully argued by my friends on the commission. This richest development is the product of the citizens of the town of Portland. It's not the, it's not the design of the developer, it's not the design of the architect, it's not the design of the Randus Office. The people of Portland determined that the best use of this property was a mixed use. And that's been aptly defined inside. And Wilson was determined, and that engagement with town's people involved, first, the meetings that I attended for more than two years, was the El Crest Campus advisor, each day, every month for more than a few years, and that, by often with fifty people or more, commenced a lot of publicity, commenced a lot of attention, we were able to garner grant funds, we had a professional firm compete and embedded to conduct a feasibility site and produce mixed-use development plan for El Crest Campus that was a good choice, A, B, or C. And then, at that point, I'm gonna, Dan Burton, right, and said, "I'm your man. I'm not gonna hybridize A and B, but I'm your man. I got it, I'm on it." And then everyone to work. And I say, "We," because it was a joint effort. And so, all the necessary components of Robert Zong and site plan development were undertaken by this commission, the project is reporting tonight. And so, all of this, to date, is what townspeople have clearly, clearly, thoroughly demonstrated is what is necessary for the long-term health benefit and prosperity of Portland, Connecticut. The town center ends its development by mixed-use development of the El Crest Campus, both of which surround the riverfront. Okay. There's one question enough. Who determined what is necessary here? I have some concerns when I hear repeated mention of the Hart Jarvis House. Quite often, when Hart Jarvis House is mentioned, it's a presentation that suggests that an evidence is being undertaken here, that somehow this is going to be dealt with when it's not necessary, or it could be moved by another party, or it's, 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 oh, it's not part of the site plan approved. As to whose responsibility it's for, not just the Hart Jarvis or the project, but also the safety. All three of those structures are very literally identified in the original site plan approval. And the responsibility for the undertaking of those structures belongs to the developer. Early. It wasn't announced, it was desired to have the building relocated. I'm very happy that that's not under consideration any longer. But it's a simple matter, by the way, to move that building. I'm living in one that's built exactly the same way, as opposed to being the same way that all the gardens in the United River Valley are concerned. The move I'm saying here was jacked up all the renovation by me and my high school classmate, and all new soils were put under this, and it was put back down and out of endless reserve. I did the very, very same thing with the barn in the construction, it was built in eighteen fifty-two, and they said, "Oh, you can move that barn, you want that?" I moved it two and a half feet, picked it up off the ground, dragged it two and a half feet, walked away, and four inches in the middle, and put it on the new soils and backed down again. And again, it's perfectly level and dead square. Early, I've investigated the Hart Jarvis House very, very carefully over a long period of time. And I've been involved in moving companies that look at those kinds of structures and kind of just, I engage them. Usually the kinds of people who move lighthouses or big brick bank buildings, they look at the Hart Jarvis subjects, "You got a team of oxen, we'll just pull it on a sled." This is not insurmountable. The matter of design and experience. Well, let's go to the next point, with different experience. You heard me say it in the last hearing, that I think we just need to find the new marketing aids, we can't find your commercial and retail tenants. I'm gonna say it again. Because as I said to my wife earlier tonight, in the last six months, I will guarantee that the Hart Jarvis has had in every single week's addition for the past six months, a major announcement of mixed-use development in the state of Connecticut. And sometimes we're two and three in a single week for the past six months. Early, even tonight, before I log on and speak, and I got the phone call, from local interests. And it's not the first call I have. People who are highly qualified, who are, would love to take on this very same experience and do it in a mixed-use development manner that the town people, the current ones, want. There are people who do this. So let's forget the problem of, uh, Hart Jarvis is a problem, it's not. And let's forget about, well, nobody's gonna know until we get the house full of tenants, that's not true either. What we need is the courage to just insist that when you step forward and say, "I'm taking it on, I understand what the conditions are, I understand what the challenges are," then just get with it and you get it done. I would ask the town, I mean, like you said, more specifically, I would ask the Randus Office to perform some due diligence and see what, in fact, the record is for acceptable mixed-use development by the parties at issue here. I know of one, on a small street in Vanberry, that has, I think, four gardens up and a laundry mat and a yoga studio down. And so, I would, I've been so loud with him, too. Discerned. I'm gonna stop right now, but I'm already reserved, you can probably come back and speak further. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Please.
There was a comment about courage. I think the courage here is the courage to see that we're in 2022, where the conditions are as they are today. We have to have the courage to look at the new timeframe, the conditions as they are, as put out by the commercial broker's letter. We also have the courage to look beyond the plot of El Crest and look at the impact of the town. We also have the courage to look beyond the plot of Elmcrest and look at the impact to the town. There's a good outcome, there's a great outcome, but there's also a bad outcome. We need to do and think about the entire impact to the town center, to the prosperity, to economic development, and to the residents of the town of Portland. I think that's where the courage belongs, to look not as the world was, not as we wish it was, but as it is and beyond, the small picture of that development and the big picture of the impact to the entire town. That's, I think, where the courage belongs.
I want to ask you to respond to the statement about having people living in that area and not being able to cross Main Street
I'm so glad you didn't ask me about the oxen.
Or Marlborough Street.
I walked it. I walked from the trailer, this week I actually walked from the trailer, from the construction trailer to downtown. I wanted to check the landscaping at Walgreens, and I'd like to stay active and walk as part of my job. I like to walk, part of my duty as an Economic Development Commission member. I like to walk Main Street and talk to the business owners. It's hardly walkable. It's extremely walkable. I can tell you that when I walk Main Street and talk to the business owners, they want customers. They want people to support their businesses, whether it's from Concentric all the way up to Savvy Swamp. People want customers on the streets. If you want the town to be something more than a Speedway from to cross the bridge, you have to have attractions and reasons to stop. Like I said, vacant storefronts are popping up at a pace that's just not acceptable. We need to address that. Critical mass comes from critical mass. Catalyst generates buzz, generates more, generates more. We need a kickstart. We need a jumpstart, or we're looking at going the other direction. We have that opportunity right in front of us. We've got to grab it with both hands. I really think we need to really sit back and say, "What do we want Portland to be? Where is it going right now? What can it be?" And, you know, when you drive home tonight, you drive through Main Street, keep your eyes open. Don't, you know, do what all of us do or many of us do. We zip across the bridge till we get to our houses. That's the wrong approach. This is an opportunity. I think it's walkable. I, but, you know, I walk a lot. I think people who will be residents will have active lifestyles. I think the gym that goes into the swimming pool. I think people will want to walk, bike. I don't find, and I know the crossing now, it's busy. I think the crossing and the light that goes in at the main entrance does nothing but dampen, dampen the Speedway that we have right now at that intersection. I think that's, in addition to all the other benefits, it does have a positive, a positive impact on what can be aggressive traffic at times. Also, more vibrancy, more people in and about activity in downtown makes drivers think less about, you know, hey, this is a Speedway. I can zip right through Main Street. So the goal is, it's a calming effect, having more activity. The current address of driving right now shouldn't be a deterrent or a reason for us to say, "Let's not bring more." It's just completely backwards. So I hope that addresses your question.
Thank you.
Let me add to it. Joe Balskus is Joe Balskus is the project's traffic engineer and arrived late this evening, but could specifically comment on that topic. It's all to my good.
For the record, Joe Balskus, traffic engineer. I actually live in town. Been here nineteen ninety. All due respect to Elwin. I've known Elwin for years. He's wrong about crossing. Coming to get your milk. We're building improvements on Route sixty-six. We're making it safer for crossing at Main Street. And we're also at the light, at the side driveway, you'd be able to come out, push a button, and walk across sixty-six. So to this point of not being able to get milk anywhere, you can come into your apartment, leave it, you can walk across sixty-six, walk down to Abbs Food and Food Supermarket, which I go to, and get your milk. So the improvements that we have designed and approved by the state DOT will provide for safer pedestrian access and mobility for its development. And I know it's not an issue tonight. Tonight, it's just really changed that Dan's proposing. But just want to be clear on that, that you will be able to come out and cross sixty-six, and you'll be slower as you come across the bridge, onto sixty-six, past Burger King, in front of the site, you'll be slowed down. Tighten that radius up as well. So the whole intent here, to Elwin's point, was making this more of a sense of place to enhance pedestrian accessibility and mobility along Main Street and connect to the site as well. So, thank you. Thank you.
If I may, let me just, let me just, let me turn to my point. I'm starting about the difficulty in crossing Main Street. It is on file with the town's records that the town's Road Service has copies of the road safety analysis done by the Department of Transportation, along with President Susan Francisville, myself, and, I think, my wife was part of that group. And all category of DOT people. It's been the entire, well, the better part of a day. Take bigger cameras, you name it. And the final analysis is on record. It says, "There is no satisfactory remedy for safe pedestrian crossing to the existing, all of us, Main Street configuration."
Existing. Elwin, first of all, you're not a traffic engineer. I am.
Inside, last night, I said, "DOT did this study."
Well, let me just be clear. Let me be clear. That's existing. So what's proposed has been approved by the DOT, by State Traffic Administration, to make it safer. So we're addressing that issue you're talking about. This will make the intersection safer. And I, as a professional engineer, my name in the record for that submission, it's been approved by the DOT, and we are getting ready to build those improvements at the intersection as well as at the side driveway. So there should be no issue whatsoever from an expert standpoint of the safety of pedestrians from this project on Main Street and Marlborough Street.
What is the coinciding of timing with that work in terms of
We have, we are about to get a DOT permit and start doing the work. Final plans are in, and we're waiting for DOT to give us the okay.
So we talked about civility in the last meeting, and I'd like to ground myself for my mother's instructions that way. I am probably better at doing than I am talking, and there are some folks who are maybe better at talking than doing. I'll leave unnamed. As it relates to the proposal, we think we think it's thought through and balancing the town's many considerations. And that's commercial, it's residential, it's historic, it's environmental. I will say this, and not to out my own guy, but I lit into somebody on my way here because the protections around this beech tree weren't up, and I was not happy when I drove into town. I'm connected to this site. We've listened and we've accommodated, I think, in every way that we can think. And we're here and we're building. We're not asking whether or not, you know, if you give us this approval, we'll do a project. That's not our request. We're basically saying, if you give us this consideration, we think we can do more sooner. That's our pitch. We're going to be here with you no matter what. I'll be back. And so I appreciate your consideration. And we have, I think, a creative solution for Hart Jarvis being proposed after, what I will say without naming names or detailing processes, what I would call years of failure, trying to do something with that building, with nonprofits. So.
Yes, please.
Hold on. I got it. It's good for you. My name is Asher Leclerc. I live on Perry Ave. I've been happily watching this unfold, and the trees started coming down. And it's been honestly a lot of fun to watch personally. What I will say about the traffic is, in my house, it's not just me and my husband. It's also my mother. My mother is seventy-two years old, and she goes for walks every day. Two and a half to three miles. She has to make sure. She tells me every day, two and a half, three hours. She crosses sixty-six from Perry Ave right up to the sidewalk without a problem. Will it be better with the crosswalk when it comes? Absolutely. But that doesn't seem like an issue from our point of view. I don't have a fear of getting a call saying, "I'm sorry, your mother got hit by a car." I don't have that fear. I don't have that concern. Especially with the tree stuff. You could see so much butter down there. What else you got? Fantastic. But that is just my opinion and my view on it. I've seen nothing but amazing things so far with this project. I look forward to seeing it all being built, mostly because I just enjoy construction and getting to watch everything. So thank you, and thank you guys for being so courteous for Perry Avenue. We appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments by any member of the public? Yes, sir.
Jack.
We got it for recording.
You gotta go up there.
Dan, here, here. I like the iron river development, but I think it should be done in a balanced phase, not all the apartments, and then commercial. I think what we need is a town with more commercial. I heard tonight about CBS might come, Starbucks might come. Well, they won't come until we build something, have something available. So if you want to put the apartments in first, or more residential, I think that's a mistake to be more commercialist. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Hassan. I've been a taxpayer in this town for fifty-one years, seven months, and about twenty-seven days. Things change. We ran a hospital there, Elmcrest. We ran it. Successful hospital. We employed a lot of people. Right? But things change. St. Francis came. They couldn't make a go of it. Things change. We had the property, the town, approach us to develop the property. Right? We had a plan. Things change. Right? We're talking about traffic. It's over the hill. We've got experts here who've done all the studies. Right? I agree with Dan. You could do more faster. Do it. But you miss a very important point. You know, if you don't have a commercial tenant, you can't build. The bank won't get you the money. Things change.
Any other comments from members of the public? Yes, sir.
Bruce Morrison, one oh nine Stewart Hill Road. We talk about doing things fast and getting things going. Not always the best way to go when you're talking about something that's going to impact the town this much. I have my biggest concern is if you let Phase One, Phase Two go, where is the incentive for Phase Three? Once the developer has the apartments and they're rented and he's collecting his rents, he's going to take his time doing Phase Three, or he may not do it at all. And you've lost your ability to control what the developer does once you've given these approvals. You can't sue him for specific forms to make him build that building. And look how long it's taken him to get this project going. It's been four years. How long do you think it's going to take for Phase Three, even if he does it? You have to think about that. And what are you going to do if he doesn't want to do it? Or he's back up here again asking for more concessions or changes or something else that benefits him? This project was originally developed to go concurrently. Residential for the developer and the commercial for the town, because the commercial tax base for the town is what we need from this. The residential was a concession made to the developer because we realized that the developer can't come in. Just do commercial and actually make it work for him financially. We wanted to make it work for him financially, but it has to work for the town financially too. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think it was interesting and appropriate and good that it came up where we were talking about the timing of the traffic improvements. That infrastructure, all the traffic off-site, all the stormwater, all kinds of things that are going on in the entire project are an investment that is being made now that gets amortized over the entire life of the project. And that means that we'll have made investment in that infrastructure that is necessary for Phase One, but it also enables Phase Two and Phase Three in this regard. Our motivation to do Building A is as high tomorrow as it is today and many tomorrows from now. Because we'll have made a significant investment to make it possible to succeed with it. And that's all we're asking for, is to increase the likelihood of an earlier success. But I can say this, for as long as that undeveloped part of the property exists, we will be trying to get it built. There's no other rational approach. We'll have made huge investments to even be in that position at that point. We just think we'll be better off the more of the rest of the project is already developed.
Questions, comments? Floor is still open? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Tom Leclerc, Knighton Perry Avenue. I heard the question brought up as far as the percentages relating to the certificancy or certificate of occupancy. So do you guys have control over whether they do build the certain percentage of commercial that they're promising to, to give them their certificate of occupancy for the residential and the commercial? So the fear that I'm hearing is that they're going to build all of it and milk the residential and never build the commercial. And to his point, they're paving this, and they're putting all this sewer, and they're putting all this infrastructure. I don't see why a company would come in and do all that and let a pad of perfectly flat real estate sit there unoccupied. So what power does the town hold as far as giving them their ability to occupy the buildings in reference to their percentages actually presented?
Can you answer that?
Yeah. So right now, it's broken into two phases. And there's a portion of commercial and residential in each phase. So per nine, what is it, seventeen, five, and two, each phase is supposed to move concurrently. So we have potential power to withhold a CO if that's not happening concurrently per phase, per each phase. So right now, we have Phase One with E, B, D, A. Am I getting, no, not A. I'm not getting all these buildings, right? But, you know, you saw how Dan laid it out. That was Phase One. Currently, Phase Two has Building A and Building F. Okay? So he's looking to break it up, Phase One, and then break up the current conceptual Phase Two, where that would move concurrently to have Building F be Phase Two and Building A be Phase Three.
So if they don't hit their percentages either way, whether it be for the current plan proposal or the next plan proposal?
So it's by phase? So they need to hit the, you know, the marks per phase? So, you know, Phase One, they have to build concurrently. Phase Two, they would have to build concurrently. So right now, there's a third phase that is separate from all that.
Yeah. And that was the largest building.
With, well, the larger share of commercial.
Yes.
So that would, you know, so that would be its own So that would, you know, so that would be its own concurrency.
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying?
Yeah. So they're just trying to build more commercial in Phase One?
No, they're trying to build more commercial in, they're trying to push, they're trying to build more residential. So they're
Less commercial.
And less commercial immediately. So they're trying to break Phase Two up into two phases so they can build the residential portion of, of the former Phase Two first and then move on to the commercial side of former, or as approved Phase Two, we should probably call it.
Gotcha.
Into a Phase Three if, if it was so modified.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
But I guess, I guess to my, to, to my point and to my viewing, I, I live on Perry Avenue, so I see this. It's, it's not, I don't, I don't know if you guys have looked at it or have, you know, driven past it or walked the property, but it's, it's not like a beautiful, developed property at this point. I mean, I've, they, they've taken out four tractor trailers of wood chips, let alone the buildings that they've taken down. So there's, there's an immense amount of work. And I've watched it for the last six months. It's been going into just leveling the ground. So they're gonna go through all that effort just to level the ground? I, I don't see how they're gonna not go through on some, on the final plan. I mean, they're putting storm drains, they're putting, they're doing traffic studies, they're doing all this stuff. They're leveling the ground. They're preparing for it. The fact that they're just saying, "We wanna, we wanna build more faster", I guess I don't see it, you know, as, as the, you know, an end all be all. But that's just my, my opinion. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Yep.
I guess I look at it as our proposal's a way to get ten thousand square feet more of commercial built right now. Just comes with some other stuff, but.
Yes.
Hey, Rutter. I live on East Main Street. Also, I have a property on High Street. I've been involved in these meetings since two thousand and fifteen, when they were up, held up at a high school. I had issues with the town making them keep the old buildings. My theory is in life, if you own a piece of property, I've owned one before, if I own a piece of property, I should be able to do what I would like to do on my piece of property and whoever bought that property, to make them keep the old buildings, even though they're nice buildings. No doubt. But to force somebody to keep something that is not of a value for what they wanna use their property for and force them to keep them with one issue. Now they're keeping the buildings. I do believe that we should build the commercial property at the same pace as we're doing residential. Sorry, but I do not feel that we should have forced you to keep all the old buildings and try to rebuild them, especially seeing they were trying to get funding for them buildings. But to make them pay to redo buildings, if they're paying for those buildings to be redone, that's an extra added cost to keep the old buildings and try to rebuild them to, or reuse for today's standards. Low ceilings, ladies, at low ceilings for restaurants or stuff like that, it's really hard to keep that. Now, the buildings are nice, thank you for re-keeping them though. But I do believe we need to kind of even out the commercial and the residential at the same time that they, maybe we can do something where we can make it feasible for them to do both at the same time. That's all.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Division members or members of the public? Anyone on Zoom who's indicating they'd like to chat? Okay, I'll make the last call for anyone who would like to speak. Before we close the public hearing. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanna ask, I, I'm just asking, is there any way, any possible way that you could increase the commercial somewhat in your first two phases? Just, I think that would give many people a greater comfort level.
So, um, from our point of view, certainly we're trying to achieve that by taking on Art Jarvis and putting him into Phase One in a way that eats a lot of money, but doesn't really generate much rent, but does create something to be very cool. We don't, and we've studied this extensively, we don't see, um, a way to do more here that we're not presenting tonight. It's kind of all about, but yeah, but if we do that, then does that materially change our odds of getting A pre-leased enough to be able to build it sooner? We had a guess, so that's our best, that's our best thinking on it. And, but we've, we've spent years on this. I mean, we really have labored over this. So this, this is, this is our best, I guess, I, to, to answer you.
I mean, like, I mean, even ten percent more would be fifty-fifty.
No, I, listen, I, I would love to do it. I don't have a business that I founded that needs the space, right? That's the only way I can kind of, you know, fill it beyond the processes we're administering, where we do our best to serve the market and get the word out that it's coming and it's coming on a certain timeline with certainty. Those things do help lease. But no, I, I don't see how to just allocate it. But Building A has a lot. I mean, we, we will. If we have the way to go forward with A, we'll, we'll, we'll do A. I mean, that's, that's absolutely a commitment. We're, we'll make, we will, we'll have made the entire, uh, infrastructure investment. We've bought all the land. We've put in all the roadway systems that are built in that way because of the uses of A, right? What Joe had to design out on the main roads and stuff, and we spent years having the state review. It was done, contemplated with those, with those uses, the restaurant on the bottom there. I mean, a lot of those things drove the extent of the improvements. So, we're trying to do it as fast as we can. I guess that's, that's what I'm saying.
So, from what I've been hearing from everybody here, it, they're just, everyone seems to be afraid of the empty promise of, you know, Building A won't get built because of everything else happening before it. Is there any way we would be able to add in some type of maturity or some type of, like, something for the town of Portland that we would be able to, you know, trigger? Or say, "Okay, you failed to do Phase Three," or "You failed to do, you know, build Building A, however many years down the road, for whatever reason." Is there anything we would be able to add in to help kind of like ease everyone's fears? Or say that, you know, like there's a monetary penalty for you?
There's definitely a monetary penalty in that we have, um, a tax incentive with the Board of Selectmen that has a duration on it, that the whole thing has to be built by. And so when we're here talking about, "Please help us succeed sooner, faster", and we don't get worked with to do that, um, and then we don't finish in a, in a relevant timeframe, then there's economic consequence because what you did, uh, from a pro forma perspective as the developer side, you say, "Okay, the Brainerd House will require seven figures of investment but have no revenue associated with it. The Sage House will never have a great, you know, similar investment, but not, you know, return." And you're putting all that in there and you're saying, "Okay, but if and when we build out the whole job, then that revenue, the tax revenue, you, it's a deferral of assessment increase." So you make the improvement and then you don't pay those taxes, right? We already spent it on the historic restoration. We already spent it on the traffic improvements. We already spent it on all these other things. So there's nothing good economically about not completing the mission, right? And so there is pain just built into the cake, just baked into the cake from day one. So, um, when we're, I, I probably should have been talking about this, saying, "Well, we only have eight years from the day one on the tax agreement to get the whole thing built," right? Um, so there, there is economic consequence, for sure.
So do, so do we wanna, uh, get that information from the Board of Selectmen so that we?
Regarding the tax incentive?
Yeah, to see what, I mean.
Would you be looking for like actual numbers, you mean?
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to think, you know, the, the timeline, if that includes Building A and all the commercial.
And the way it was explained, just explained.
If I may, what, if I may try to explain, because I think the exact numbers of it are not as relevant as the fact that
Well, I, the structure.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, but, but, but please let me try to describe it now, just because we would like to, if possible, close this hearing and have the blessing on the, um, the rotation of the Starbucks building. Because pursuant to that tax agreement, we're supposed to put in for a building permit on the Starbucks building. And we need to do, do so before the end of this month in order to be compliant. We'll submit something, but we'll be kind of doing an empty exercise. But we're, we're trying to close this hearing now and keep things moving towards the end of the Starbucks deal, I suppose. But I would, I would say that the concept is this on these cash flows. When you commit to building a project and it's going to have these operating expenses across many years, right? For when you get it all built up. And then one slice of it is a lesser operating expense, which is your tax line item. And you say, "Okay, what's the net present value of those cash flows?" And you put a discount rate on it, you calculate, um, what its value is today. And then you invest it in historical buildings that are never going to have a return on them, right? Yeah, it's, if we don't build that building in the future, we never get the rest of the model that made it, um, make sense. I, I think it's that.
Beautiful.
Yeah, that, right, exactly. We just went out and spent pie in the sky savings on a building that never had the top cash flow, right? Or the profitability that we hoped for in the future. So absolutely, we're coming out on the short end of anything along those lines because of the way that the town approval requires us to make so much upfront investment. And these now three historic buildings, um, versus two, and then all the other things we've talked about, um, we're going first. I mean, there's no question about it. And that's the way it should be. The tax incentive is to try to get someone to come and step up and take risks that they otherwise wouldn't take. We've agreed to do that. And we're, but we did agree, I will say this, if I can pull on any heartstrings at all. We stepped up in part, I mean, Uncle Fred's over there. I've known him my entire life. I'm, I'm a skill set, but I'm only in Portland because of Fred. And so this job, when, I mean, I, I've talked about this before, I had to get rid of my own father to continue developing this. He absolutely refused to do this project. So, you know, you make decisions about what you're gonna do in your life, and I decided I'm gonna do this project, part because of the relationship here, but also it's informed by a trust in the town. I do think there's, you know, I think we have a good rapport. I might be wrong, but I'm, I'm here. I'm gonna do my part. So.
Okay, so going back.
I just can't add more commercial because I don't have customers.
No, so I'm going back to, uh, the tax abatement, I guess.
Yes.
So you said it's eight years?
The, um, the timeline for, uh, completion of the two phases, you know, because
From when?
Oh, two thousand sixteen, maybe. Why, no, 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 we, it's later than that.
I think it's eighteen.
What's that?
It's, it's, I think that in February, it's going to be five years since the special permit was issued. So that's five years.
Right, right, on the special permit side of things, but I, but I, but I'm not sure, because there is a different timeline with the Board of Selectmen processes. And we had, um, we had initially gone there. The, the way it generally works is you come into a municipality and you address the, the executive board and they say, "We're willing to offer certain types of incentives to get you to look at, you know, something that's important to us." And the plan of development certainly calls out the Elmcrest site as an important redevelopment property. So, um, I will say, day one, I was told, "Save the Brainerd House and I'll give you the key to the town," right? And I said, "Okay, that's a special building. We're gonna call it Brainerd Place because that building resonates with me," right? And I, I, I saw it from day one. Then it became the Sage. And then it became a location for the Sage. Then according to different people, there are other obligations. I don't really see them, but somehow I think I got outplayed or something because I'm sitting here proposing to take care of the third building now with, with Art Jarvis. So that process often precedes the zoning approval process with the Board of Selectmen or any executive group in the town. And then sometimes you have to go back. And we've had to do that, um, with the Board of Selectmen and say, um, "Here's the actual plan that got approved and the timelines with it, and, you know, you retool parts of the, uh, tax agreement." But, yeah, actually, just thinking about the tax agreement makes me wish I were more articulate because I would love to be able to figure out how to say, "I need it," in order to have the tax agreement be complied with, right? To get the best pitch we can to the, to the world, right, on the, for the commercial. But yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't get the benefits if we don't build the phase. But we'll spend the money.
So tonight you're looking for approval to rotate the Starbucks building?
That is a component of the proposal. And then the creation of the Phase Two and Phase Three is the other material. It's one application. That's true. Yes.
I just wanted to clear that.
Oh, no, please. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because when you started, you said, "This is what I'm looking for."
No, it's a, right, and it's, it's a component.
And I just wanted to clarify that. It's not really all that.
Oh, for sure. Oh, a hundred percent. You are correct. And I'm sure there's stuff we're not talking about to add to it. But, but yes, the, uh, we are, we are, we are hoping to, uh, close the hearing and, uh, hopefully do some more.
Great.
Okay, just real quick. Uh, we got a comment from Elwin that the tax abatement is subject to fixed conditions. If P and Z takes action, that requires a time change, then the Board of S, the Board of Selectmen must make the change for the tax abatement. That's just Elwin's comment. I can, I certainly can try to provide you with more information if that's what you want.
Well, I was just wondering if that was something that would, you know, it's an incentive for him to get all the building done by a certain time. So what is that timeline? And, you know, so he'll, he could potentially lose a lot of dollars if he doesn't meet that timeline. And that, you know, includes completing all buildings.
Yeah, it's broken down by phase, but yes, that's the concept.
I don't think we really need the details of it. It's just more, uh, I mean, the reason why I brought it up was mostly because to address a lot of people's concerns about, well, what happens if down the road you decide not to build it? Well, there is a financial consequence that will result from that that will benefit the town because we'll get more tax dollars and the whole, because of the abatement.
Well, that's a little debatable. You'll have gotten the initial phase built. And then, of course, you'll get more tax dollars at the end of that abatement period. And it does phase in, right? It's not a one hundred percent deferral. It's, 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 it steps down over the seven-year period. So definitely the town gets money. Um, but anything that, like, never gets built, say Building A never got built. You know, then the town never gets those revenues from that, you know, supposed building. But we're all, we all suffer. I mean, the idea is to work together and try to, try to get stuff done.
It's kind of like, um, you know, the, if you build it, they will come. Or, um, if you would, or what you said, which is, "If you can't get the commercial demand, you won't build it." And so it's, it's a very difficult.
So I believe that I am absolutely living So, I believe that I am absolutely living out Kevin Costner's Field of Dreams, right, the, in this, in this situation.
But you're not, because you don't wanna build, you don't wanna build it...
You don't know what I did to get Phase One started. And so, and I won't, I, I alluded to some of it, but we're already doing that, because that infrastructure, that risk of not complying with the later-phase development, right, is real. We're out there spending money now. This is a very different type of thing from what is often going on, where the developer's saying, hey, if you do this, I'll do that. My only this for that is the hard Jarvis obligation, taking that on and trying to keep it in place. I'm already here, we're already building. We'll be back the second we have a prospective tenant who wants to move something around, right? So, we're not going anywhere, we're just trying to get as much done as we can, so. But, we're definitely taking the approach that we'll build it, and it'll come. We're saying that if we build that 10,000 square feet of commercial in Building F, then we'll find somebody to go in there, because they'll be able to see how beautiful it is, they won't be trying to envision what it might be, they'll be able to go in, look around, and say, okay, I can see fitting in my business in this location. That's the, that's the manifestation, and we're not saying we won't build Building F until we have tenants lined up for that 10,000 square feet. We're gonna build it, period. We just don't have the ability, and Fred made reference to, Fred's an accountant, by the way, when he came out and gave the listing of days and, you know, he's a numbers guy. But, yeah, it's, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry. Thank you for your consideration.
Last call before we close public hearing. Anyone in public, commission members?
Can I have a quick clarification?
Yes, yes, please, so we can record it.
Again, just so I can get clarification on it, what they just said was...
Just start, start over, yes, yeah.
So, for clarification, his tax incentive starts on the date that we approve?
I'm not a, an expert on it.
Well, from what Elwin said, his tax...
I believe what Elwin was saying is, if, if, if the nature of the project and phasing has changed, that the Board of Selectmen may reexamine the tax abatement.
Oh, starting at, at that date?
I think the whole, I think the structure of the tax abatement, I, I don't wanna speak for the Board of Selectmen and what the Board of Selectmen may or may not do.
Right, well, because the, if, 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 if they do that, or they have to do that, then his commercial thing would be that he should be building commercial at the same rate he's buying. If he's trying to get the money in, because he's worried about his tax, shit, his tax thing is gonna be weaning off before he gets the commercial buildings in, then it's two different things. If they, if they start, the day he starts to build, and it goes eight years...
Right, you're saying he could relax...
He can relax on some of the commercial building thing that's gonna be a hardship...
Well, so...
Because right now, they're, we're claiming a hardship that we're already five years in to the eight years of tax.
It, it's, if the, say, there was a change, and the change was necessary, that's in the Board of Selectmen's purview to negotiate with Dan and structure the tax abatement in a way that the Board of Selectmen finds favorable for the town.
So, then, what I'm, what I'm asking is, then, this decision should almost be based on whether the town is going to lengthen that eight years, from where he has to build the commercial at the same rate, or...
So, while that's an important factor, I think the planning and zoning commission needs to look at the application in front of them, and make a determination based on the application in front of them, and not necessarily the tax abatement. I know that's certainly a potential relevant issue, but they gotta look at the facts and the matters that's in the record, and then make their decision from that. We can't speculate as to what the Board of Selectmen may or may not do. Certainly, I think it's in the back of, of everyone's mind here, but I think they need to look at what's in the record, what the justification is for both the parking waiver and the waiver to the building concurrently, and, and then make a decision from there, and really, it's just based on what's in the record. We don't have any, the tax abatement's not in the record, we have no control over the tax abatement, so it's really, you know, the facts that are in this room and the facts that I got over here in the folder, that, that, that will, should, should lead the commission to make their determination.
And our, and our interpretation of the regulations is they're written?
That's correct.
Right, so, within the regulations that we have, what they're asking for is possible as long as they meet the criteria, and it's the board's purview to make that decision.
So, the question really is, is, I guess, if we follow the regulations, am I right? Where it says, "Commission is satisfied that conditions beyond the control..."
Could you, you speaking to the mic, Victoria? Nobody heard that.
So, I, I guess, it comes, from a regulations point of view, it comes down to, the commi, if the commission is satisfied that conditions beyond the control of the developer will prevent the execution of the schedule of development as approved. So, that's...
Mm-hmm.
Kind of the...
I would say so.
That's the text, but...
And our council believes you have that authority, and we wouldn't have asked for it had not that box been checked.
Okay, last call, again?
I guess the only thing I'm gonna add as staff for you guys is you need to make the decision on your timeline. I know the developer would like it closed, for the end of the month for, for various reasons, but I think regardless of what you wanna do, you need to, you know, take the time that you need to take to get the information that you need to make a sound decision that you guys are comfortable with. So...
So, if, yeah, commission members would like additional information, I would make that, make that known. And we can continue the public hearing?
Yeah, you certainly can close it, and we, you can discuss it amongst yourselves, you can, you can close it, and we can continue the public hearing once it's closed. If you need to think about it more, you can still get input from staff, myself, Jeff Jacobson, you know, Carrie Olson, if you have any questions. It, it's really however you wanna approach this. We, if the public hearing was continued and left open, you could get more feedback from the developer and the public. If you think you've satisfied with that amount of information that you've gotten already, you can close it and then go, go one of the routes I was suggesting before. Or if you feel you're ready to make a decision, you certainly can close it, discuss it among yourselves, and, and vote tonight.
But, in fairness to the applicant, I believe if we feel like more information, if we feel like more information is needed, we should probably make that known.
I believe so, and if you think more information from the applicant is needed, I certainly think you should request that.
I don't know what else you could tell us.
Yeah, I know.
Bob, I mean, I feel comfortable closing it out. I mean, I think we've heard from everyone a lot over the last two meetings.
We have.
You know, we've been given a lot of information about the changes that they wanna make, and I think we've kinda narrowed down to what the concerns are of the town with these proposed changes, and I think we should have enough information in front of us to make a decision.
I tend to agree. Any thoughts? This is on, not on voting, but on just leaving the public hearing open.
I don't have any more questions that...
Yeah, I don't have any, yeah.
I need more information to keep the public hearing open, and we'd like to discuss a little bit, but...
Okay, then, may I have a motion to close the public hearing for application twenty-two dash one?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay.
Uh, you just need to vote on that.
Right, I just wanted to bring up a point, one of our commission members has lost their internet connection, so I believe we would probably treat that vote as an abstination.
I would, I would agree. Does she have, does she have access via phone? Could we call her? Because she's currently a voting member.
Try.
Yeah, try calling her, Carolyn, and we can put her on speakerphone.
Oh, she lost her connection, so she can't vote on any votes.
Well, yeah, she should be able to provide input.
We're gonna vote on, close the public...
I'm getting, uh...
At the tone, please record.
Okay.
She, they, where she's staying, they lost their internet. Let me see if I can...
I mean, I suppose at this time, man, I'd rather this happen. Or, or we could technically seat, seat Tom for Chantel.
Like, I think Deanne said she is a voting member, she was seated as a voting member.
Right, I mean, we could seat Tom still, you know, members have come in late on different applications, if this is a little...
Not alternates, though.
No, alternates can be se, seated for a regular member if the regular member's not here.
How much of the hearing was here for?
She, she was...
Had this issue come up when I first started, and I wasn't able to be seated because I came in, I wasn't there at the beginning.
She lost her internet.
I don't know if that was correct or not.
I got a text at eight-twenty. So, she's, she lost...
So, she's missed about an hour of, of the hearing?
Yeah, so she, she's not really eligible to vote now anyways. She's missed, you know, relevant material in the public hearing.
So...
Victoria, no, you don't think, no, I've never hea, I've, I've not heard that, but...
When I, when I first joined Terry, I was, I, I couldn't be seated because I was late.
Right, but had you missed portions of that public hearing?
No, I was just late, the meeting had already opened.
Okay, 'cause I've, I've sat members who are reg, I've sat people for, who's come late on different applications before. This is a little unusual.
Yeah, I'll say.
Here's a question, though, if we vote on it, and for whatever reason, because of this irrel, irrelevant, ah, I can't even say it right now, I'm sorry, but because of this issue, and the vote all of a sudden becomes void.
Well, okay, so...
We vote on it again at the next...
Regardless, we need, you either need three votes to approve, or less than three votes for the motion to fail. I think Bob's right, if we keep Chantel seated, she's an abstention at this point, and then the four of you can move forward. Now, whether there is a possibility that this would be challenged because of this, I, I can't say for sure this, I've, I've not, I've not run into this to give you, you know, bulletproof counsel.
I say we move ahead with that assumption, we will treat her, Chantel, as an abst, as an abstentation.
Okay.
And so, we had a motion to close the public hearing, we had a second to that motion, so I would vote aye to close the public hearing. Victoria?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would be none, okay, so the public hearing for application twenty-two dash zero one is now closed. So, that leaves us for discussion amongst commission members. Did you indicate you...
I would just really like to have, I would, I wish Chantel was here to be able to contribute her, her thoughts as well, so, it's unfortunate, but...
It is, yes.
Yeah, and I, and I'm not getting, I'm not getting a response, so...
Okay.
I think the, her concerns boiled down to, though, this, when she was talking about the whole chicken and the egg argument, and whether or not, you know, putting the, the development or residential ahead as a priority versus, you know, doing the, both simultaneously, commercial and residential. I mean, at least from everything we've heard today, I think that going along with this is the best approach for everybody. I understand the concerns, but you could debate all night over what would be the best way to go, and we don't have the personal experience Dan has with this project, we don't have the experience, knowledge of his finances and how he best can manage that. We are looking at, from Portland's perspective, about what's most likely to succeed, and if he's coming to us and saying that he's most likely to succeed by doing residential first and then doing Phase Three and more commercial later, I'm leaning towards saying that we should use his judgment and go with it. It is, you know, it's obviously a very difficult thing to assess, we can't figure out what's gonna happen in the market over the next five years. There are penalties for him, big financial penalties, if he doesn't build Building A, and that's through the tax abatement, and so, it, it's a, you know, I, I think that we should, you know, work with him in this and, you know, approve this.
I mean, the other, the other thought, I mean, I was here from the beginning on this, and I know what we all went through doing the, getting the tax amendment, and then, I mean, it was just a long contentious process, and the whole thing, and, you know, I, 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 I understand what you're saying, I'm just bringing up that, you know, it's just the thought that the commercial, the bulk of the commercial is gonna be in Phase Three, and that could, there is a potential that it could not be built, you know, it kinda, because, you know, I understand what you're saying about the, you know, potential financial issue, or issues for them, but it's just, it's, it's not really what we signed up for way back when, and what the whole, the town signed up for, and, I mean, I see both sides, it's just, it's hard to...
A lot of things have changed.
Yeah, I, and I understand, things change.
We're talking timelines that started back in 2015, you know, it's seven years ago.
I understand.
And things can change again, and you don't know what's gonna happen.
Exactly.
So, you can't really, you, you don't know what the future is, and part of that future could be no commercial space being built, and so, you, you know, the, the only way to ensure that future not happening is, is to not allow this change to take place. So, you're right, you, things change, they do, and, and if you want them to change in a certain direction, you do everything you can to ensure that they go in that direction. I don't know, I don't really know what the right answer is, because it, it is difficult, do you build it first, or do you not build it first? I mean, it's, it's a very difficult thing, but, you know, the people of the town really wanted this to be done concurrently, and, and there was a lot of work that went into this, and that was what the agreement was, and I, I, I don't, I don't have a very hard time saying, oh, well, you know, things change, because things do change, and they, they could change in a, in a really bad way if we allow that avenue to be opened up.
Well, I mean, the other, I mean, the thing is, is everyone was talking about how much effort went into, you know, getting to where we are now, and you mentioned that I haven't been on the board for as long, or I haven't gone through this process.
I haven't been on the board that long.
Yeah, she wasn't.
But, the thing is, is that how much of that now is a, well, you've pushed so much time into it, and you've got this one mindset about how things have to go, that you're kind of putting yourselves on a blinder, where you're not able to look at the fact that sometimes these things need to be, like, play, you gotta be able to play with it a little bit in order to make it work, or make things more workable. And, sure, the original idea was to have it in this very specific way, but we're getting presented with something that could maybe put a higher percentage of... But we're getting presented with something that could maybe put a higher percentage of a possibility of success on this project. And if we're gonna look at this project, you know, and try to predict the future, which we all can't. You know, we all think that, you know, like when we're talking about predicting the future, we think of the negative that could happen. But we want it to be successful, so we wanna make sure we put the highest percentage of chance for it to succeed. And if this is the possibility that it has the highest chance of success, you know, we shouldn't pension over ourselves just because we've sunk so much time into plan X.
But you're assuming that this has the highest chance of, of success. You're, you're, you're saying that this has the highest chance of success, but maybe actually building the commercial space has the highest chance of success. Because, because as, as stated, when, when you walk into a space and you look at it, you go, oh, I wanna be here. You know, if, if you don't have the space, it's harder to say, I wanna be here.
I believe it was presented to us as a, this is increasing the chances of success financially for the project. So it's more going based off of what you presented to us and presuming that what you're presenting to us is factually true. I have no reason to doubt that you'd be lying to us about that.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things. You're talking about the, the financial, uh, the success of the project. And I'm talk, and I'm thinking more about, which is, they're tied together, but it's a little bit different. I'm thinking about actually having retail and commercial tenants and having space there for those people to come in. And, and so, if it's not, so it's, it's this, it's this scenario that I mentioned before. Do you build it first, and then people see it and say, oh, I wanna be here? Or do you, do you have people come to you and say, I wanna be here, so build it for me, and I'll move in in a year and a half? I mean, you, you're, you're assuming, when you say, this is the best chance of success, you're, you're agreeing that that's the best chance of success, and who knows?
We're here, we're hearing from the experts.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we're being bee-arsed.
No, I don't think we're being bee-arsed either, but I, I just don't, I, I just, you know, it's...
Well, and it can change again. And there will be some commercial. It's just not the percentage that we had hoped, would have hoped for.
Yeah, the way, the way I'm thinking of it is, the game plan has changed. But come the end of the game, we're gonna be where we, as a town, wanted to be with a mixed-use development.
That would be wonderful.
It's just that the game plan has changed.
That's what we all want.
Well, we want that end, that's what we want in the end.
Yeah.
We can all agree that that's what we want in the end.
Yeah.
How you get there is...
I've lived in this town my entire life, and, you know, I'm happy to finally see this property being, something being done with it. You know, and I, I think that's what everybody wants. Just something to actually be done with it, so it's useful, productive for this town rather than I saw it. So...
Yeah.
So, given that discussion, how do people feel? Do we entertain a motion? Do we ask for more time to digest this?
Bob, I'll, I'll support a motion, approve it.
I think we have two undecideds. Now, do remember, you could always vote negative to a motion. If that's how you feel. Right, that is always an option. I'm going to suggest that we entertain a motion.
Okay, so, I'm gonna give you the motion for the modification first, and then we'll do the motion for the parking waiver if the motion for the modification succeeds. Does that make sense? I don't see a purpose or a point of granting the parking waiver or voting for the parking waiver without the other portion of the modification. You, you guys are okay with that?
Yes.
Who am I getting to?
Good question. I'm gonna read the whole thing?
Um...
Okay.
So, just go to where, you know, just that first one.
Undecided.
All right.
So are we gonna have Chantel?
Yeah, Chantel will be an abstention at this point.
All right. So, motion to approve application number twenty-two dash zero-one, Main Street, Marlboro Street, West Side, Perry Avenue. Request for a special permit modification. Application and property of BRT DeMarco PTP LLC. Assessors map nineteen, lot sixty-eight, zone B three slash T C V D. As shown on site development plans, Brainerd Place. A mixed-use development, Main Street, Marlboro Street, plan set. All right? And this approval is subject to the following instructions and conditions that are integral to this approval. One, that this approval will expire in five years. Two, that the certified letter of approval be placed on the plan. Three, that, that three paper copies and a Mylar of the plan be submitted to the planning department for endorsement by an officer of the commission. Mylar shall be filed on the land records within a hundred and eighty days as per zoning regulation section ten point five point three point two A. Four, that a zoning permit application be submitted in accordance with ZR section eleven point one point one point A to ensure compliance with this approval. And five, that, that plan is subject to a final review by the town engineer and fire marshal, and that any comments from them must be addressed.
Just a point of order, I don't mean to... Rob, I'm gonna say you, you, you made the motion. Did, did we have a second?
Not yet.
Okay.
But Rob made the motion.
Yeah.
So that's all you had to read. Okay, may I have a second then to the motion? I can second it. So we'll do a vote. This is Bob. I vote aye. Victoria?
So, on the fence, can I go last? I vote aye.
Carolyn? Rob?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? There would be one abstention as one voting member lost her connection. So the motion will be approved. Thank you, everyone.
That was for the whole modification, and now that... Well, you still gotta approve the parking waiver.
Yep.
As well. Otherwise, yeah, I mean, the parking waiver too.
So we can't congratulate them on the first one?
Oh, you had the parking waiver too?
Without the parking waiver?
Let's, let's...
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna read the motion for the parking...
Wherever.
Motion to approve a request for waiver of ZR section eight point two point two, off-street parking requirements for application number twenty-two dash zero-one. Main Street, Marlboro Street, and West Side of Perry Avenue. Request for special permit modification. Application and property of BRT DeMarco PTP LLC. Reason, ZR section nine point seventeen point five allows for a waiver of off-street parking requirements. The unique design and proposed mixed uses within the MUD justify the waiving of the off-street parking requirements without creating hazards that would harm health, safety, and welfare. The applicant has demonstrated that development of the MUD shall not create any adverse impacts on budding residential uses or residentially-zoned properties.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, this is Bob. I vote aye. Victoria?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would be none. There will be one abstention, so the motion is approved.
Okay, so, um, did you guys wanna take like a two-minute break, or do you just wanna power through it?
Two-minute break.
Okay.
Yeah, good idea. That was a tough one. I think tough is a good, I feel, at the start.
Why?
You guys are here from the start. It's gotta be hard. Very frustrating.
Very hard.
Okay, sorry. I got paranoid for a second. Thought I lost everything.
Okay, now what? Uh, 260. Okay, you ready? Okay, we're gonna continue our, our meeting then?
Uh, let me go find the engineer. Yeah.
Oh, he's right here. He's way, way ahead of us.
Clearly fussed.
He's ready.
Where were you gonna go look, by the way?
Downstairs. I saw you walk downstairs.
I did.
You're very sneaky.
Okay, so next item of business is application 21-13, 264 Free Stone Avenue. Request for site plan review for excavation work to construct a new 18,000-square-foot building for contractor trade units. Application and property of Global Free Stone LLC. Assesses map 20, lot 179, zone I, industrial. So we have someone who would like to speak.
Do we have that? Let's move.
That's, yeah, we're just, I think we're just getting this.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
So, good evening. I'm Rob Ultra, mighty engineer for the applicant. As you all, or most of you recall, I was here in June, gave you a site plan presentation. At that time, we were, had just received comments from Jeff Jacobson. So between now and then, we've worked through a bunch of those comments. So, in your packet, you have Jeff's comment letter of August 17th, yesterday, and I think if you look at that, you'll see that there's text portions to three comments, but the rest, and there were several, are marked down as having been addressed. So I think we're in really good shape this evening. In fact, the, the comments that are outstanding, I, I don't think we, we differ in any way from, from Jeff's comments. So, I, I think what I'd like to do, especially to be brief, is just pick it up where we left off in June, and go through the, the comments that Jeff still had. So the first one, he's suggesting a condition of approval that would require us to do an as-built survey of our proposed detention base in an outlet structure. We take no exception to that. That's obviously a very good idea to ensure that what's get, what gets constructed out there is going to be in conformance with our stormwater cals and our plan. Comment number two is regarding the, um, the uses in the building. So, this is, it, it's now a multi-use building of the 109,500 square-foot existing building on the site, the former manufacturing facility. Most of that is indoor storage, with some exceptions. There's a parking chart on the, on the plan. Right now, we're in compliance with the parking requirements of your regulations, and where your regulations were, were silent on some of those uses, I actually provided data from, from ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, to fill that in.
I'm sorry, you provided data from?
ITE, that's the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
I just didn't hear you.
No problem.
Thank you.
But for what it's worth, they're the same group that publishes a, well, it's a publication called Trip Generation. You've probably heard Traffic Engineers refer to it. You know, that's what they use to estimate new site trips for Palangus Development. This is a similar publication they put out that is their recommendation for parking based on, on the uses. And then the final comment for D, that has to do with the excess material from the site. This is a cut site, so we will be exporting material off of the site. That will not go to a location here in Portland. That'll go to one of the applicant's, many other projects he has some need for fill on some sites in East Hampton. So those are really the three comments that Jeff had as outstanding. Again, we don't take exception to them. They certainly could be included in any approval that you would offer, and I suggest that this application is finally, after being continued many times, ready for your consideration for a conditional approval.
So you, excuse me, you said that they're not gonna be using the location at the important Copeland Road and Middle Adam for the disposal?
For the, for the, that, that's correct. I had originally stated that because the applicant does own that site, but his permits have, has expired. He would have, if he's gonna, if he wanted to use that site, he would have to come back to you and renew that permit.
Just, just for the board's reference, I put the conditions from Jeff's memo into the motion already.
Okay.
So, um, we can, you can obviously look at them. I can read the conditions, but everything from, I put the three conditions from Jeff's memo into the motion already.
Including time required to complete excavation?
Yeah, and what I'll do is I'll update the, the motion after you approve it to, to reflect that. So, we would need a time period from the applicant in terms of how long the excavation would be, and then the start of the two-year clock per our regulations that the excavation would be completed anyways. But we, we're supposed to get a timeframe or estimate from the applicant as to how many, how long that excavation could, should take.
So can you move to that?
So, given where the, the state of the site at, at this point, I believe it could be done quickly, but of course, we'll have winter weather setting in. So where you typically would require, or extend up to two years, I think a, a one year, a 12-month would be very reasonable.
Is there gonna be any expected impact on the local residential neighborhoods from, during this excavation process?
No, I mean, it's, it, it's construction activity. There's excavation, there, there is rock excavation, so there, there is, while there's, so far there, and I don't anticipate there'd be a need for blasting, there is, there is hammer using pneumatic equipment. You know, construction is generally during weekdays, during daylight hours, so, but, you know, there, there are neighborhoods close by, and there is excavation to be completed. I'm, I'm remiss to say that a lot of it has already been completed, and, you know, they're nearing the end of the, the excavation that's required, so that is good news.
And so, the drainage? The detention pond? Would that, how does that affect, like, neighboring properties or?
Yeah, no, the, um, the detention pond really doesn't affect neighboring properties.
Well, you put that in, so it doesn't?
That's, that's exactly right. So, and those, those calculations have been, I would say, very, you know, very thoroughly vetted by Mr. Jacobson. So, you know, even with this development, and, and again, it's, I don't wanna say only, but it is only an 18,000-square-foot contractor warehouse building. It is relatively small, but the detention basin is grossly oversized and actually, in the, in the post-development state, will have less runoff from the site to the discharge point.
Did you say that the excavation work has already started?
Yeah, and I mentioned I was remiss to say that, but that, I, I think everybody here is, is aware of that.
Yeah, so, prior to me getting here, my understanding is that the zoning enforcement officer had to go out and ask, ask them to stop. I don't believe there was an enforcement action, or a letter sent, but yeah, he, he started work without permits.
So there was uncommitted activity?
The, the end of the day, that shouldn't affect whether you want to approve this or not, although if you were not to approve it, then the town would, you know, take the appropriate enforcement action to get the site returned to its, its prior configuration.
And for what it's worth, you know, once he was cited, he quickly, you know, got myself on board to develop the application and get it in immediately.
And they stopped.
And stopped?
Yeah.
Correct.
I don't know, it just, it feels weird, especially since we've been, had, like, this application's been kinda delayed for so long, and we, it's already been submitted, it's just, it's strange that you would start the work before, you know, without getting the approval first. It just, I don't know, it just seems incorrect.
Well, it's, it's not the proper order of things.
Yeah.
It, it happened, the applicant stopped, he's gone forward, you know, through the application process, and that's where we're at now.
Yeah, my understanding is he stopped and then submitted the application. So, this, this was, you know, in the spring.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought this was like after he submitted it?
No, 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 no. This was, my understanding is before he submitted.
Okay. When we got our first application, I did, I went, I drove by, I tried to drive by some, many of the sites.
Yeah, I know he was moving dirt around.
Hey, they already started.
Yeah, I know he moved some dirt around recently, but my understanding from speaking with the, the owner was that he was not doing any more excavation required, and I made that clear, that he should not be doing that.
And one last point on that, you know, I had him immediately go in and install some erosion controls, you know, stabilize the site, you know, while we go through the application process.
How tall is the retaining wall that is called out?
So, the retaining wall that's called out is, is actually, so that proposed building's kinda nestled into the grade, so that back wall is about 14 feet in high, but it's, it's actually part of the, the building itself.
So you're saying that's the back wall of the building?
Correct.
Okay, other questions or comments by commission members?
So, in, in the plans I, I just handed out are exactly what is already in your packets. There are some minor revisions to these plans that are a result of comments that just came from Jeff Jacobson yesterday. So, these are something what I'd call more of a, of a final plan for, for filing.
With the retention mark and, okay.
I added some color just to kinda highlight where things are. So the red line would be your property boundary, that orange line is the outside limit of the existing building, the highlighted yellow building is the 18,000-square-foot contractor warehouse building, and on that second page, the grading plan, the blue area is the proposed detention basin area.
And, um, the, the, I'm not really ori, I'm not really oriented, but at the top of the page here, this top, this is a residential, if people, what, what?
It is resi, so, so north is straight up the page.
Oh, it is.
It is residential to the north, northeast, yes.
Okay, and?
So the building, I'm sorry, I'll just jump in.
No, go ahead.
The building, of course, you know, complies with your setback requirements, and the plan conforms with your, your screening requirements as well.
Okay, but you said there's a 14-foot wall?
The backside, the north side of that proposed building, the, the building is built into the grade, into the topography, so the back wall of the building is, is a retaining wall.
So it's pushed in from that?
Exactly, but I keep using that term, but it's nestled into the grade.
And how much above the grade?
Approximately six feet.
The roof line?
There'd be six, six more feet of building to the roof line on that, that back or north side.
Okay, and then behind, behind the building, between the building and the property line, what?
So there's a lot of wooded vegetation that will remain, as well as fence screening.
So you're got, you're, you're proposing to put a screened fence there?
Yes.
And those, that's somebody's backyard?
In addition to woods, yes.
Okay, so, is, are you, are you putting a screened fence along the property line?
Yes, we are.
So people right now are used to looking at woods, and they're gonna then see a screened fence?
And, as well as their own woods. It's, it's wooded there.
So it's not making somebody's clear as that, yeah?
No, I, I don't think so. I mean, it's, it's, it's 20 feet or so off, off of the property line, you know, the, the end of the building, but there's still, there's still vegetation in there in addition to the screened fence.
And the screened fence is on the property line?
Yes.
What, what's the height of the hill where they're excavating? Is that much higher than the 14 feet?
It varies, but it's, it's, obviously, it's a 14-foot cut or so in that area. The, the grade continues to rise beyond that, the limit of the building, the grade continues to rise there.
So the neighbors would be looking out, if they look out, they'd be looking over the building?
It would be, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, they'd be looking at what?
I took a ride back there. It's a fairly
Yeah.
High hill.
Yeah.
That's been excavated, and I'm hearing a 14-foot wall.
Correct, so it's
And then the slope continues up.
So they're not gonna see the building?
Correct, so I think to this commissioner's point, you know, from that, that view, because that building is essentially nestled into the grade, it's really not changing that view shed looking to the south, you know, 'cause you're gonna see over this building.
And they won't see the fence, 'cause it's in the woods?
Correct, correct.
Is that, is that?
You know, if some of it's deciduous and, and leaves fall, you, you would see the fence, but it's a combination of evergreen and deciduous there.
These units, they're just gonna be for storage, you're not gonna have a guy leasing it out like, 'cause I think other portions of the property have like different businesses leasing out and doing
Right.
You know, like manufacturing functions.
Yeah.
Is this more of like storage for those businesses, or is it, you're actually gonna have like a tenant?
So they're really, so each unit, there, there's 12 units, they're 25 feet wide, they're 60 feet deep, they have one overhead door and, and a main door entrance, two parking spaces in front. I mean, these are ideally, you know, what you call contractor warehouses, you know, maybe somebody, you know, is, is a plumber. They, they keep a van inside, they keep their materials, tools inside, they go there in the morning, they get their work truck, they leave. I mean, that, that's who it's really suited for. So it's, it is more than storage, these are, these are for contractors, but it's, it's contractor storage, yes.
So there won't be any retail activity or?
No.
Or service activity? Like you have an auto detailer in there, you, you wouldn't have an auto detailer in this building?
No, these are intended for, and we, like I said, for contractors, and we did submit a, a draft lease, like a, a sample lease agreement, you know, what's, what's excluded.
So Victoria, if I could just weigh in on that, say if a proposed business does go in there, it'll most likely have to come before you guys to get approval. So you'll, you would have time to weigh in on that? If that was proposed by, say, the, the owner five years down the line or something like that, he would have to come back to the board and, and receive approval from you?
I just thought, I just don't see where there would be room for really parking.
Well, so, yeah, that's why, one of the reasons you, they would have to come back to you, so they would have to show parking. And one of the conditions, per Jeff's comments, is outside of this building, the main building, if, if those uses change, that he's gonna have to come back with a parking plan to justify uses in the rest of the building. And so that's one of the conditions in the motion.
I think we approved something in that, on this property a couple months ago, right? The classics, uh, injection molding?
F and F, I think.
Yeah, you're correct. Yep. And you actually are receiving an application in tonight for the same property.
Further questions? Comments? Not public here. Okay, then we'll entertain the motion.
Well, so the public could still speak if you, you want them to, it's, it's up to, it's up, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Would any members of the public like to speak regarding this application?
My name is Phyllis Clark, and I'm a neighbor of this property. I live in Grandview Farms on Sherwood Court. My backyard backs up to this, and it has been awfully noisy. I think that Dan will say, tell you that he has two letters that were mailed first of the week in opposition to this. They were the, they're the people that live on either side of me. The noise has been hard to tolerate. It starts at seven and, 6:30 in the morning, and goes until late at night. And he said that it had, that the guy had stopped, but he hasn't. Two days ago, it was a full day of noise. And then it was a day of calm, and then it was off and on all day on Wednesday.
What kind of noise are you hearing?
Loud.
Like?
It's construction. It's, it's
Trucks and?
And the ground being moved and that kind of stink thing. And there's supposed to be a, a line of property, like bushes and trees and that, between that and, and our property. And one of the women next to me said that before the leaves came out on the trees, she had a light that came all the way into her house for a long, long time. And so I don't think that when he said he stopped and then put in his application, no.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
So Dan, do we have verif, do we, can we get verification of that, or?
So I, I spoke with, with the lady in question. I've already indicated to her that that may be a violation of zoning, the, the lighting, and we certainly can look into that. One of the conditions of the approval is that all lighting meets our lighting regulations, which are full cutoff, but it's certainly something that the zoning enforcement officer can look into, and if the, the light is trespassing onto our property and, which would be against our regulations, it's something that we could take action upon.
Thanks. And I'm also wondering about the noise.
Yeah.
So I, I will, I called, I called the owner that day. I haven't been out there. I certainly can send our zoning enforcement officer out there again.
That's an enforcement issue, I think.
Yeah, but if you approve this application, it would remedy potential violations. They would need to finish the work in accordance with your approval, and I think, as Rob pointed out, the owner told me he was not excavating. He, he said he was moving some, some, some soil around, about 100 yards, but if he is, well, you can, you can, you can move 100 yards without a permit in the town. Yeah, so, while he should not have started the project without approvals, you know, I, I don't think that's necessarily And he said that it had, that the guy had stopped, but he hasn't. Two days ago, it was a full day of noise. And then it was a day of calm, and then it was off and on all day on Wednesday.
What kind of noise are you hearing?
Loud.
Like?
It's construction. It's trucks and... And the ground being moved and that kind of thing. And there's supposed to be a... A line of property, like bushes and trees and that, between that and our property. And one of the women next to me said that before the leaves came out on the trees, she had a light that came all the way into her house for a long, long time. And so I don't think that when he said he stopped and then put in his application, no.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
So Dan, do we have verification? Can we get verification as well?
So I spoke with the lady in question. I've already indicated to her that that may be a violation of zoning, the lighting, and we certainly can look into that. One of the conditions of the approval is that all lighting meets our lighting regulations, which are full cutoff. But it's certainly something that the zoning enforcement officer can look into. And if the light is trespassing onto our property and... Which would be against our regulations, it's something that we could take action upon.
Thanks. And I'm also wondering about the noise.
Yeah.
So I will, I called the owner that day. I haven't been out there. I certainly can send our zoning enforcement officer out there again.
That's an enforcement issue, I think.
Yeah, but if you approve this application, it would remedy potential violations. They would need to finish the work in accordance with your approval. And I think, as Rob pointed out, the owner told me he was not excavating. He said he was moving some soil around, about a hundred yards. But if he is... Well, you can move a hundred yards without a permit in town. Yeah. So while he should not have started the project without approvals, you know, I don't think that's necessarily germane to whether you approve this or not.
That's an enforcement issue.
Yeah, I forgot. What's the noise ordinance?
So they would have to meet the noise ordinance, but during construction. The noise ordinance is, I believe, administered by the police?
I'm just wondering what time it is.
Oh, so we have specific regulations on excavation. I believe it's seven AM. Yeah, and so, but then it's... Yeah, it's different in the, on the weekends. I do believe it's a little later on the weekends.
Are there any regulations regarding noise level?
That's the noise ordinance. That's administered through the board of selectmen and the police department. Now, when the building is in operation, they will need to meet that noise ordinance. But normally, I believe there are exceptions for construction activities. And like mowing your lawn, you know, or blowing leaves. There are those certain exceptions. So certainly, once, if this gets built, the operation on site will need to meet the noise ordinance. If not, you know, a complaint can be filed, and enforcement action can be taken if they violate that. The one time that kind of came up in terms of noise was Portland S and G, the large sand and gravel operation that was approved, I wanna say in 2018, that you guys had done. And so we, there was a noise study done for that project. Yeah, that was for the trucks that went behind Old County Way, just to the south of that.
Can we, can we request that evergreen trees be planted along the border between Grandview Terrace properties and this property and the property line?
So the applicant needs to meet our zoning regulations in terms of buffering and screening. So this is a little different than, say, our last application. This is a site plan approval, whereas before you were doing a special permit modification. You don't have as much legislative latitude and discretion in a site plan approval as you do in a special permit.
So there's nothing that we can ask them to do?
So actually, if I can jump in there.
Yeah.
On the third, on the third sheet, sheet SP three, that's our landscaping and erosion control plan.
Yeah.
If you look at the area, so like I said, north is straight up the page. So if you look at that northeast portion, like above the detention basin, you'll see the proposed double row of pines and some other trees in that location. So, you know, half of the area against the residents is getting additional landscape buffer. The problem was, if we did it behind the proposed building, that's where there's real shallow rock. It just won't survive. So that's why we opted for the screen and, you know, with the privacy slats in that area above the building. It's just that the, you know, the conditions of the ground, the vegetation won't take.
Okay.
So I did wanna point out that there is a, you know, kind of a hefty proposal of new double row evergreens here. Are you seeing that?
I am, thank you. I always worry about that. Thank you.
Okay, further questions, comments? All right, Dan? Yep, please approach the podium and identify yourself.
My name is Carol Caldis. I also live at Grandview Farms. The gentleman here just said that he was gonna do blasting. Does he have to have a permit for that as well? Because of the rock?
I believe he said he wasn't doing blasting, but if...
He wasn't doing blasting?
But if he does do blasting, he will have to get a permit through the fire marshal's office.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear what kind of facility this is going to be? Is it small units of storage units?
I'll reiterate what the applicant said. It's contractor trade units. And the intent is, I believe, from the applicant's engineer, like a plumber, someone, someone that electrician. As he stated, it was to store some of their goods and their van. If our committee member, Victoria, asked if retail or something like that could go there, anything like that would have to go back through the commission if it was so proposed. But it would have to stay within uses in the industrial zone.
So it's more like a storage facility for commercial people?
Yeah, so I believe, like the applicant said, they come, they get their truck, they load up with their equipment, and then they go out and work for the day and then come back.
I understand. They're not gonna be fixing motorcycles or anything like that in there?
No, that's not part of this approval.
Okay, thank you.
There would tend to be more daily use than a personal storage unit, I believe. As contractors come to retrieve their equipment and so on.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, further questions or comments?
I just wanna say about the noise issues.
Yeah.
That's, I know it's not something that's kind of in our jurisdiction in any way. I'm just looking through the ordinance. It looks like it's something that's more for the police and the first selectmen. So, you know, that's more with their permission than anything.
Right.
So I don't think that's something we can base our decisions off of, so.
Yeah, they'll still have to meet the regulations and guidelines that we have for excavation now.
Did you wish to add something?
I don't think I do.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
All right, then I guess we'll entertain a motion.
Oh, to close, oh, it's not, okay. Oh, just quickly, did you wanna go with the twelve months as requested for the excavation time period?
You thought it would be faster than that?
He said a year, he said that a year would be a good timeframe.
Well, you allow up to two years. And, you know, I really think that there's, you know, less than a couple of months of work, but then winter weather will set it in. So I think it's just fair maybe to split that two-year max that you allow. So I was suggesting twelve months.
Okay.
So twelve?
I think twelve.
Okay, twelve months, and then the start of... The start date that you would like to determine. I get the feeling that we probably should. Let's do tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Since he's already...
It's almost tomorrow.
Sure.
But if it's tomorrow, would that mean the work that was done already would not be in compliance then? Would you have to make it...
No, we probably wouldn't look at the work that's been started already.
Okay.
We would just say that the clock starts tomorrow. You need to finish within the time period given.
So if there's a light on, you can complain to...
Yeah, give me a call at the land use office.
Land use office. And if the noise starts before seven o'clock in the morning, that's not legal either. So six-thirty, six-thirty in the morning is not legal. Seven o'clock. Because it's an industrial zone.
Is that an industrial zone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you have any questions, concerns, just give me, I'm Dan Beray, I'm the town planner. Give the land use office a call. Okay.
Okay, we'll take a motion.
There's a lot of new additions.
There are. Victoria's a fast reader.
Yeah, just read to like there and then hop in.
You don't need to read all the sheets.
Okay. All right. To approve... To approve application number twenty-one dash thirteen, two sixty-four Free Stone Avenue, site plan application for excavation work to construct a new eighteen thousand square foot building for contractor trade units. Application and property of Global Free Stone LLC. Property parcel ID zero-two-zero-dash-zero-one-seven-nine, Zone I, as shown on site development plans. Proposed contractor storage building prepared for Global Free Stone LLC by Robert V. Valtrimer... Valtrimeris, P E. Is that as far as I need to go, and then?
Yeah, that should be fine.
One, okay, so based on information submitted, testimony presented during hearing, and subject to the following instructions and conditions integral to this application. One, that the applicant addresses and complies with the comments and recommendations from the town engineer's report dated eight seventeen twenty-two. Two, as a condition of approval, that as-built drawings be prepared for the detention pond that confirm the design calculations for the town engineer's memo dated eight seventeen twenty-two. Number three, that the remainder of the building at two sixty-four Free Stone that does not have a prior approval for tenants remains self-storage unless a plan to modify the site's approval is submitted and meets any parking requirements per Z R section eight point two. Number four, that a condition that no soil or material be deposited off-site in the town of Portland unless approval is granted by the commission. Any onsite material to be used be shown, any onsite material to be used... To be shown?
Sorry.
It's okay. To be used to be shown in updated plans submitted to the land use office for review. Five, that a time period of twelve months for the excavation be given to the commission, that all excavation work be completed within two years of the start date determined by the commission. Start date eight nineteen two thousand twenty-two. Number six, that the applicant address any of the comments from the fire marshal after submission of final plans. Seven, that the certified letter of approval be placed on the site plan and that a Mylar and three paper copies of the plans be submitted. After endorsement, the Mylars must be filed on the land records within a hundred and eighty days per Z R section ten point five point three point two point A. These requirements must be met prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. Eight, that a zoning permit application be submitted in accordance with Z R section eleven point one point one point A to ensure compliance with this approval. Nine, that any exterior light fixtures must comply with Z R section eight point three and must be approved by the zoning enforcement officer prior to installation. Ten, that all proposed improvements associated with this application are to be completed according to the approved plan prior to the issuance of the required certificate of zoning compliance to operate businesses at this location, or a performance bond will be required in accordance with Z R section eleven point two point two. Eleven, any proposed signage shall meet Z R section eight point four. Twelve, this approval will expire in five years. Reasons, the proposal conforms to section six and ten point five of the zoning regulations.
May I have a second to the motion?
Second.
This is Bob. I vote aye. Victoria?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there would be one abstention, and so that means the motion is moved.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, then we'll move on. Next item of business is to receive in applications, and we have two. The first is application twenty-two dash zero-one two sixty-four Free Stone Avenue. You should sound familiar. Request for site plan review for conversion of existing manufacturing space into commercial self-storage units. Application and property of Global Free Stone LLC. Access mat twenty, lot one seventy-nine, Zone I, industrial. And the other application to receive is number twenty-two dash zero-three, which is a subdivision, fifty-five South Road.
Bob, if you, if the board wants, you certainly set the twenty-two dash zero-one two sixty-four Free Stone for the September first meeting. I would just wanna comment on twenty-two dash zero-three, that that public hearing not be set until the September fifteenth meeting, as conservation still needs to review that and provide feedback to you for you to make your decision.
So these would both be public hearings? Is that my...
The site plan approval, sorry, twenty-two dash zero-one is not a public hearing. But I would, you know, if the board wants, you could do that on the first. But the public hearing for the subdivision should not be till the fifteenth.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to staff report. Update of accessory apartment regulations.
So the state passed new statutes regarding accessory apartments. While Portland does have pretty liberal and, you know, open accessory apartment regs, there is a couple, one thing I know for sure, the minimum, the maximum size of attached accessory right now on our regs is a hundred square feet. The state statute changed that to a thousand. So we just need to update the accessory apartment regulations to come up to speed with state statute. So I just wanted to let you guys know. I will provide you that information, and then we can go through that process.
So this would be text amendments?
Yeah.
We started some text amendments for that very topic earlier this year. Do we wanna pick those back up? If we're gonna be doing additional text amendments?
Certainly, I wasn't aware, like, I wasn't aware of the work on the potential marijuana regulations. But we can add both those items to the agendas. I don't know if you wanna concentrate on the cannabis portion of things first. And I can work in accessory apartments, you know, maybe at the second meeting in September. But I certainly will add the cannabis on the September first agenda.
The accessory apartment, we have to meet the state?
I think, yeah, we need to come in line with the state statute. There was a provision in there that you could opt out of the state statute, and that's what I ended up doing in line. But they have very different accessory apartment regulations than we do here in town. What the regulations that are in the Portland zoning regulations are much more in line with the state statute. It's just a small, a couple of small things. I think it's mainly just that eight hundred to a thousand, but I have to look into that more.
Okay, thank you. Bond reductions.
There are none.
Hey, land use training.
So I was remiss, I was, an error. We do not need to finish the land use training by the end of this year. It's by the end of next year. So we have a lot more time. So I apologize for that. And, you know, we'll set those up, hopefully, at convenient times for you. But like we had talked about earlier, if you're unavailable, it'll be all via Zoom, and you can pick up those hours of training on your own time.
Okay, look forward to it. Correspondence?
We have none.
Okay, next item is public comment. We have no members of the public in the room. Anyone online who would like to chat?
Matty.
Imagine that, okay.
Bob, I do have a comment.
Sure.
I was talking with Dan before the meeting started, and it's more of just a procedure of how we handle, like, all of our packets and everything. So everyone likes to get stuff printed out, but we also get stuff emailed to us. And so we, sometimes we'll get like, you know, two or three different emails, and, you know, all thrown to us. So I was just kinda thinking that maybe if we had like a Dropbox for every meeting where we would have all the documents in one spot that, you know, we could get sent the link to. Or we can access the link to have, you know, everything in one centralized location. It might be easier procedurally that way. It's more of just kind of a thought more than anything. Might make things easier, but it's not something that, you know, we can just kind of consider and, you know, going down the road. Especially since most of our documents do come in digitally. I mean, I obviously like to use digital stuff when I can, but it just, you know, might make things easier if we have it like in one spot.
So like a common repository for... Okay, I guess that would have...
How do you know what you've... So I'm like a paper person. I'm like a paper person. So how do you know if you do something like that, that you've like looked at it? Is there, you know, when you get an email, you, you get an email and you mark, you know, you can mark it red and you can kind of move on or put it in another folder. So if you had it, if you had something like that, how, how would that work with, um, you know, when you, when you read something, what do you do with it to mark it red? Like, how does that work?
Well, I mean, we still receive like an email notification that something was uploaded.
Yeah.
But it would save us the issue of going to like one individual email and seeing like a chain of emails to get to the document you're downloading, whereas you'd go to the Dropbox and you would go to that and you could download all the documents that were sent. So you could get three emails saying that three different documents were uploaded to the, the Dropbox and that way you know that some, you know, activities happened there. You can get notifications sent to your email from that whenever there's activity. So it's not even a requirement that you get those emails. You know, and it could be just, you know, Dan or the land use, uh, or Ms. Triff emailing us saying that, hey, there's been, you know, something that's updated, um, you know, here's, it's in your packets, you know, hard copies have been mailed out or whatever. However, we want to do it, um, and for me, I mean, I know I, what I would do is like for, before the meetings, I'm usually downloading everything on my computer and accessing it right here. So it's more of a, like, if everything's in a Dropbox, I go and just download the, you know, the documents that are new and save it to my computer and then access it that way.
Do you have to download it to read it?
Not necessarily. Um, you can, certain Dropbox programs allow you to view the documents in the Dropbox program itself, so you don't have to actually download it.
I know these are really kind of primitive questions, but.
Is that something that you'd have to get approval from the board of selectmen?
No.
Well, it's, it's a change in the way the land use department operates.
Yes, that. No, yeah, that's something we can do internally in the land use office. It's, if that's what you guys want, we will try to accommodate you as best as we can. I can, I can look at it and bring you back an option or two. We're still going to be mailing any of the packets.
Yeah.
That won't stop. Uh, it's just how you're getting the digital documents, whether.
I'd like to see if you have a common repository, definitely, but I think printing the documents is, is cool, but.
That won't change.
Right.
Yeah, and then that's all I'm like suggesting is just like figuring out.
So you don't get 10 emails, you just get.
Well, you'll still get 10 emails if we upload 10 different times. So I'm thinking probably Google Drive.
The difference would be is that I wouldn't have to go to each individual email to download each individual document. I could just go to the Dropbox and access it that way. And if there's like an email comment, then we could like print PDF that email and upload it into there. So that way it makes it easier to differentiate like public comments that are emailed and, you know.
Yeah, so we probably.
I'm game to try anything still.
We probably upload everything and then give you one email.
Something new, that's good.
Just, just so, I, I feel like that's going to be more taxing for Liz. So we're just going to upload everything and then, you know, maybe give you one email from me or Liz being like, okay, it's there, but just like, you know, with this week, we're getting stuff at the 11th hour. You know, we got a whole bunch of stuff, especially for 264. So that won't change. Um, so we'll try to maybe send out the email same time we mail the packets, like, you know, everything's uploaded that we currently have to the folder. I'll cut this short. And, and, well, I'll come back with you with some, some options and we'll take it from there. I think, I think you all want to go home.
That's the idea. Yeah, okay. So, um, that was, that was correspondence, right? Oh, that was public comment.
Oh, do you have a comment?
One comment from Elwin, he says he's very proud of you guys.
Did, did you guys hear that? Okay.
I didn't hear that.
Tell them we appreciate it.
Elwin said he's proud of you.
Proud of you all, he says.
Thank you, Elwin.
Thank you, Elwin, for the compliments tonight.
Okay, uh, next item is to approve the minutes from August 4th. And we have a slight revision and I'm trying to find what, uh, that was on. That was on, um, okay, so that was on page 11.
Yes.
And, uh, under public comment, we just wanted to recognize Elwin's, um.
Is that Alan?
Yeah. Instead of Alan in the next last paragraph, that was Elwin, Elwin Kyle, who made that statement. This summarizes his statements. So we're just going to revise that. Credit Elwin, Elwin with that comment. So, uh, based on that, may I have a, um, motion to approve the revised minutes from August 4th?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All favor say aye. Aye. There would be one opposed, would be, uh, no, there would be one abstention. So minutes are approved and may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Who do we want to give that second to? Victoria? Four zero dash.
Let's say, I know you said a lot more than.
Thank you.
Not concise.